Okay, thanks. Thanks, Brandon. We are outside the courtyard and listening to music.
No worries. Hopefully it was fun.
Yeah, I gotta say, you know what, like, this just really brings home what a cool town Lyons is. The fact that we're having a board workshop and we're outside listening to music is, I just want to say that. Okay, so before we get going into the nuts and bolts of what we're gonna talk about during the noise workshop, and I'm gonna do this again when we probably, at the end of audience business, maybe at the beginning of the discussion item, but I just want to explain for the folks watching at home, and Brandon, you can correct me if I get anything wrong, the process of creating an ordinance or a new law in Lyons. And so the first thing that happens is the board as a whole decides, okay, we want to take a look at creating a new ordinance or making a change to an ordinance. That's the first thing that happens. Then what we do is we schedule a workshop with staff so that we can discuss what we would like to see in that ordinance. And sometimes it's more than one workshop. Like, I, we've talked about noise before in workshops, and for all we know, we may talk about it again in workshops. Once we give direction to staff, which happens during our regular meeting, about what we want to generally see in an ordinance, then staff actually creates the ordinance that comes to us for first reading. The first reading is the first time the board sees the actual ordinance. And if the board passes it on first reading, it goes to a second reading and a public hearing. There's a process to make amendments and changes and all kinds of stuff. During the second reading and public hearing, that's when the public gets to speak about the ordinance while it's a matter on the agenda, although anybody can speak about anything at any time during audience business. If we pass an ordinance on second reading, then it becomes a law and it takes 30 days to implement. So I just want to make sure everybody understands how the process works. How did I do, Brandon?
I think you did pretty well. I mean, I will say that not everyone, every ordinance goes through a workshop, but the bigger ones like this one typically do.
Cool. All right. So who wants, who on the board wants to start us off here?
Mayor posed a question that we need to discuss on the record while we're out listening to music. I might as well take that up. Because it's, it's, it's a legitimate question, and both for the residents who are concerned about noise at their homes and for the venue owners who are concerned, what, what do they do on site? The question is, okay, if we set a decimal limit at receiving property, which is what probably most of the ordinances that are decimal based do, how does the venue owner know if it's 85 decimals here at the stage? What's it gonna be, you know, up on Fifth Avenue or Third Avenue or First Avenue or whatever? What Golden did, and you can see that their actual report back, it's in the packet, is hire a noise consultant to go around to measure both at the venues and at various locations around their venues and their residential areas and say, well, there's 82 decimals at the venue, it was 67 here and that type of thing. We talked about it briefly before, the idea of having some sort of measurement, basically trial period, if we put a new ordinance in place and specify a decimal limit. To have somebody go around and check, and, and not the deputy sheriff. They have other things to do. It's not something they would generally do. Could be a town staffer who's supposed to get some overtime. Could be a noise consultant we hire to basically measure both at the venues and at various spots in the neighborhoods and report back. It's also within the ability of any music venue that wants to do it to go do their own measurements and check it out for themselves. The, the issue would be though, you know, obviously their objectivity could be subject to question. Whereas if we have a town staffer or hire consultant go out and do measurements and report back, then it's a more objective neutral party. And I've even got a suggestion as to how to pay for that. Two suggestions. One is there's a number, there's a a bit of rollover money from the 2020 budget that we haven't reallocated. And the other thing is, on the agenda tonight is, how do we, what do we do with what we call our business recovery fund? It's not being used for revolving loans and the Economic Vitality Commission has suggested a couple of issues to that. But that's not gonna exhaust all that fund. I believe the remaining balance in that fund would be more than sufficient to pay for a temporary place 60-day consultant. And obviously it relates to business issues in Lyons and affects the business community, which is kind of the parameters for using that fund. So I think that would be probably money well-staffed. If we pass an ordinance at a given decimal level to retain somebody to report back to us, is it working or not? Golden did that. They initially set their decimal limit at 82 decimals. They got a number of complaints. They hired a consultant to check it out. They lowered it to 65 decimals, which is probably where they had 65 in this first draft aim for. So we can do the same thing. We set a particular level, and if it works fine and there's no complaints, great. If there are complaints, we would have data from an objective source to adjust it as we need to, up or down.
Do you, I think that's a really interesting idea, and I'm wondering if you would see any benefit to doing that kind of study prior to creating your ordinance?
The trouble is, how would anybody know what the rules are in the meantime? You never, never win. Are we still enforcing the 25-foot rule of existing ordinance? Are we trying to, or, you know?
Well, we're kind of not enforcing them now.
Yeah, we aren't, but as soon as you get complaints, what do you do? Not, not, not not respond to those complaints in order? Because if we leave it in place, my opinion is, we're gonna get complaints.
Oh, for sure.
And so we either ignore them or we enforce the ordinance as written. So I think we should do what Golden did, which is pass an ordinance, we see what our PABs do, set a level we think is appropriate for Lyons, and then see if the ordinance, if the work fixes it, adjusts it.
You know, that sounds like a great idea. But the problem is, the topography of Lyons, the climatic conditions, like today with this hot, heavy air, sound is gonna travel differently than it would on a cold day. We'd also have to, gee, I think we probably have to just specify maybe 10 spots. We can't do everybody's house clearly. But we're gonna have to, we're gonna all around town, right? I, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I don't know if I want to do it after an ordinance or maybe. I know what you're, I know what you're saying. The music venues don't have any baseline as it were.
Well, but I think what, what we've seen is that the music venues are willing to work in partnership with us to create something that's workable. And so, you know, maybe it could be sort of a trial, you know, that we work in partnership to do a study. How, how does, how is this working? How is this festival level working if the business owners are willing to do that?
It would have to be weekends too.
Yeah. And I think the summer is a perfect time to do it. We could do it in the winter.
The only time to do that because there's not much other music going.
I agree with a trial period. I like the idea of hiring experts, since I'm not an expert on sound. And I really like the idea of using summer as a trial period. I'm, I'm not convinced that we have to pass an ordinance beforehand. I feel like we have functioned without an ordinance up until this point. Well, we have an ordinance, but it's qualitative as opposed to quantitative. So I feel like that has worked for us for the past, I don't know how many years. And I feel like giving ourselves time, like when we deal with important topics, controversial subjects, like the IGA, for example, we press pause and we said, let's take our time. We have time. Let's think this through. And so I feel like this summer, we're kind of geared up right here in June, where we could spend the next couple of months taking those measurements, having expert report its findings. And I like the idea of different locations around town. I just don't know that we need to decide now. I don't, I don't know that I would be able to decide between 65 or 80.
The question is, what do you do in the meantime? Can you declare a moratorium on the current ordinance? You're gonna get complaints.
What, so Deputy Sears said, I think I caught this, 24 complaints last year and 20. Deputy Sears said, I think I got this, 24 complaints last year and 23, can't.
Do you remember how many complaints Sergeant Sears said we had last summer?
I can see my notes here somewhere. I thought he mentioned 24 and 23 were settled amicably. There was never a, I mean, there might have been one.
Yes, but that's just complaints made to the sheriff's office. It doesn't, it ain't somebody that emailed down hall the next morning and say, last night, you know, X venue was too loud.
Do we get any of those?
Sure. But it's after the fact, and we always tell people, you need to address it with a non-emergency number at the time.
Do we take any action on those to the the source of the complaint?
Oh.
I mean, is it, is it, is it a phone call or?
In some cases, it might be. I mean, you know, we've gone through periods where different venues have been resourced, you know, like when Lions Den was open. You know, it, it, it changes. It seems to change and move around a little bit around the community.
So it seems to me that no matter what happens, what we do, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. That goes along with government at this level. So I think we have to do what we believe is right in the circumstances. I'm a musician. Made six albums back in the day, all on vinyl.
We should have you sing out.
I mean, you know, some of the freedom. I, I think 65 is too low. When we first talked about it, I thought it was too low. I said then I thought the number was 80. I'm probably happy to myself suggest that 75 is the number from the property line of the person making the complaint. I'm with Mark. I believe we actually have to set a number and do it, see how it's going and make adjustments and plan on doing that while this board is still operating. So we have another, we got another 11 months to, or 10 months now to do that. So the sooner I think we make the decision, the better off. We look at the complaints we get. We consider what's happening with it. You know, it could be that we just have some venue owners that are less inclined to say to their people, because I don't know of a band anywhere that's gonna not just, you know. And gotta say, nope, you gotta, you know, you gotta hold it. So we hold those people accountable for it. But I think 65 is too low. I thought it was too low when we first were talking about it. And hearing it today, it's like, oh, yeah. I'm, I'm more inclined to think 75 as opposed to 80, but that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Trusty Hammer, what are your thoughts?
I agree with Trusty Williams. I think 65 is too low, 75 maybe. At the same time, though, I think we should look at some kind of trial, whether we create some temporary code. And go to, well, I don't, I'm just throwing this out. So, I mean, can we revisit code in, at the end of the summer? I mean, so we can either go that route or I'm okay with Trusty Dotty just saying, let's, let's try it. I think it would be good to work through the summer and work through the mechanics of all this and get people in the board. It's gonna take a while. And then hire, I think it's a great idea, hire an outside consultant, pick the 10 spots and, yeah.
Trusty Donovan, what do you think?
I agree with a trial period and not having an ordinance now and then do testing. And I do think 65 is a little low. So, but I think wait and do testing.
I just wanted to add, we, we should also look at different types of music. Because certainly the DJ thump, thump, thump music that I hear certain locations, that bass travels quite a way. So I think it'd be interesting to, to have different types of music to monitor by the consultant to see if that even factors into the code or not.
You can see when Golden, when Golden did theirs, they, their consultant specifically said this was a, this kind of band and this kind of band. And it made the difference in the base. That's the kind of information we needed.
I'm not sure we can get the Norwegian death metal measurement.
I see a really great opportunity for us to lead by example by testing ourselves first next Wednesday at the First Sandstone Concert Series. I would love to see, answer, answer that question as to what should it be at the source for it to be 65 or 75 at 25 feet? I would love to pick a point like a Walt Self Center, for example, or somewhere across the street. Kind of like we have from, I'm thinking of from Maine to High, for example, where it's across the street. And I would love to kind of lead by example and say, you know what, we're actually gonna test this, you know, decibel measurement at our, at our concert series. And maybe we can take different points with, I mean, I honestly think towards the Walt Self Center or the Code House would probably be the best estimate there. But I would love to lead by example.
Yeah, and I think that's a great idea. And I also think that depending on the venue, it's gonna, it's gonna vary considerably.
Sure, sure.
But that would be a good baseline.
Can, can we create code with a sunset at the end of the summer?
We could, but I'd like to know what Brandon and staff would think about trial periods, et cetera.
I mean, certainly within your power to sunset any piece of legislation we pass.
I don't know why we want to sunset it. If it didn't work, we just changed it. You know, I, I don't, you know, the, the subjectivity of it all. Just to, just to go a little bit of field for just a second. Harmony is heard in the right hemisphere of the brain. Rhythm is heard in the left hemisphere of the brain. If you have a right hemisphere deficit, then rhythm is going to be more bothersome to you than it is if you do not have a right hemisphere deficit. So individual responses based on our neurological receptivity patterns and how the brain processes information all impact how we hear music. This is always going to be subjective when the day is done. I don't know why I'm looking at you. And if you want to balance me on that, Ian Miguel Press, his work, The Master is a Necessary, definitive work on right brain, left brain stuff, neurologist, neuroscientist, psychiatrist at Oxford. 500 pages. I can give you a summary.
Thank you.
Trusty Dante, you had, you and I talked this morning, and you had an interesting idea about time of year. Do you want to talk about that?
Oh, right. Yes, because I was looking over the draft here and I was noticing how we were wanting to shorten the hours through the week. I think we said, you know, Monday through Thursday, we'll stop at nine. And actually, my early concern through the week is when there's school the next day. So what I was recommending was that we follow the school calendar when it comes through the, and actually we figure it as the school week. Because I do think that if there are children living close to these venues, that I think that they would probably be, I think as, as an educator, I think it would be important for them to get a good night's sleep so they can actually learn the next day at school. And so for me, I was thinking maybe only having that limitation on hours from like August 15th through May 15th or something like that, where I don't have to worry about them shortening up the next day tired because they haven't gotten to sleep before 10 o'clock at night.
I think that's a good, that's a great suggestion because there is no after music during the winter.
Right.
Right? So why shouldn't we have those? Yeah. Any other thoughts on that?
I also think that nine is reasonable, Sunday to Thursday, 10 on the weekends. You know, I appreciate the way people have been. I mean, I, I hear, I hear the farm hat loud and clear. I'm probably outside of their property, close to the, the fourth closest house. It never goes to 10 on the block. And I, I just, I respect the folks who run venues in this town and how they're looking at all that. But I think nine is tough for a lot of folks. Who know the better late. I also think that the fees spent on that we put together is in fact not reasonable. I think it's way, way, way too high. And truth is, I would hope we'd not be, we'd be finding anybody even time anywhere. But you gotta prepare for worst case scenario there. But yeah, that's, that would shut folks down. Look at these parts.
I agree with you.
A little bit of background here. A number of these same conversations took place five years ago, I guess. We have one, what's called an overlay district that exists right now. But we actually have two. One of them is basically unrestricted. The other one is, it's sort of, we call it restricted outdoor activity district. And it covers one, basically one block of town. It's a block where boxing and fair are now. At the time we did it, it was the Stone Cup. And there were these same types of conversations that went on for several meetings of, what's a reasonable time? What do we do about school nights? Because that's supposed to be school, that particular block is in an overlay district because that block is shared between residences and, at this point, two different businesses, both of which have various types of music. We ended up with a nine o'clock shutdown time there. But partly that was done because the Stone Cup was the only entity at the time that was doing the music in that block. And we tried to accommodate both them and neighbors that expressed issues, including, including school nights and that sort of thing. So that's what we kind of came out with after prior discussions on school nights. It was not a block. If you look at the sample of ordinances that other places do, most of them do distinguish between weekdays and weekends. And they, they vary on their hours. Some of them go to 11 o'clock. In Austin, changes at 2 o'clock in the morning, you know, that kind of thing. But we are a small, a small town. And so what works in some places in terms of it's these hours in the commercial district and it's these hours in the residential district doesn't really make a whole lot of sense in lines when you have that block with shared residences where probably at the Ford Lions Den, we literally have houses within 50 feet overlooking a music venue. On the block now where Rock Garden is, there are residences on that, on that same block. And so it's.
And Mark, I have a question.
It's hard, it's hard to set up different residentially, commercially districts in lines because a part of this is about.
We're 1.2 miles. Yeah. So a question for you. You've done, I think, I think more research on this topic than anybody else on the board. Have you, do you recall seeing in any of the other ordinances, ordinances you looked at a, a time of year limit like Trusty Dotty was talking about?
No. I don't think there's, there are many that change during time of year. There are.
Is, is staff?
Those tend to get handled by special event permits and how many special, and there's, there's centermen holidays more than seasons, I believe.
We're kind of unique in that respect.
And again, we're different. It's, you can, you can have outdoor music in Houston in the summer. I mean, in December, it'd be perfectly comfortable. Can't we do it? And again, in that respect, we would have to recognize that we're different from other, from other places. And our experience with the overlay districts, there used to be three. We cut it to two. Because the more particular rules you add, instead of making it townwide or simply by days of the week, the harder it is to educate both residents and venue owners. We had real trouble with three different overlay districts and nobody was sure what the rules were in each one. Even with two, I've talked to a venue owner who's not in the restricted area who thought that they were. And it, so there's really a virtue here based on our experience in keeping it simple.
I, I agree with you. That's, that's a great thing to point out is that one of the reasons that I think the board wanted to take this up to begin with was, you know, aside from the 65 decimals at 25 feet limit, was to give businesses some predictability so that everybody knows what the rules are and, and simplify it. So.
And, and residents too.
And residents, yeah.
If you're in your house and the music's too loud and you see that it's 9:10 on a Tuesday night and the shut-off time is my block, then there's, you don't really need to get a decimal meter or anything. You just notify it. You hope you didn't notify them, hey, you went, you know, 15 minutes too late last night. Let's not do that again. And notify the town too. Because they usually won't be late. And you would hope that problem polices itself because that was, that was pretty simple.
Yeah. And I, and I think that, you know, the problems policing themselves is also another good point. I have personally not heard of any venue in town that has not been responsive to resident feedback about volume or time. And, and I get, I get a fair number of emails that contain some sort of complaint. But I have not received one about that. And I think that speaks really highly of the music venues that we have in town. And Steph may not receive more, but I, I feel like there's generally a good working relationship between residents and.
The feedback that I have gotten from several residents though is, yeah, I'd be glad to call the venue, but on this venue's website, I don't see a number to call. So I think that there needs to be, needs to be prominently featured on the website, say, live to venue itself. What number do you call? I think that's a problem.
And that'll be, that'll be something interesting to talk about, because then, you know, what happens if that number, the person at that number is busy doing something else that the normal someone calls or if they're on time, you know? So we need to, we need to work on that a little bit.
Well, and that's a good segue into this, the, the permit here that was proposed. So I see there is a primary contact and a secondary contact. I guess my question was, how do we communicate this to residents, you know, and, and not just property owners, but tenants as well, so that everybody's getting this information?
Yeah, and I think that's something that, that I would go to staff to recommend. That's when we, when, even when we get there and see what other communities are done and what's worth.
Austin requires the venue when they apply for the permit to send like a, something in the nail to everyone within a certain distance. So that would be kind of like the notice. And they would, that would include a phone number or two.
I agree with you. I have a problem with that because we don't require that for other types of businesses. And I think it's a pretty harsh requirement. I think, on the website, venue's website, most venues do have websites, I think, listing a phone number there, that's, that's where you should go for the family list of, too, on the town website also. Airbnbs, for example, we don't, they, they do annual permitting. And they're required under our ordinance to have contact numbers. But we don't require them each year to notify people within X number of feet of those. I think that's, that's a pretty heavy burden to let our.
So what is material here? There's a couple of references, so-called good neighbor policy. Is, is that what Eric Kane was suggesting? Is this the good neighbor policy? The multi-page word of the name.
No, no. But no, that was more general. The board talked about creating a good neighbor policy at some point and ever to avoid punitive actions.
I have a suggestion on that. To the way this is, Patrick's ending the packet again for everybody, that was just a, a first attempt at it. It's not something the board has discussed in detail or voted on. That good neighbor policy was like built into the permit application. I think procedurally would be better to adopt by resolution a good neighbor policy separate from what's in the permit or what's in the code. So if we need to tweak it, it can be done by simple board revision instead of going through the first reading, second reading, and process. And it turned a, an, a permit application into a four-page application. I think that ought to be separated out. And in the permanent application, you can acknowledge receipt, business can acknowledge receipt of the good neighbor policy and some sort of commitment to follow it. But I think that needs to, you can break it up separately.
I, I agree with you. And Brandon, I have a question for you. So Trusty Browning is suggesting that we separate out the good neighbor policy from the ordinance, which I think is a good idea. And saying that maybe it's adopted by resolution. And I'm one, so I'm wondering about that. And also maybe what we want to do is give staff the responsibility of tweaking your good neighbor agreement when it needs to be tweaked. Maybe it doesn't even need to be a resolution, just an agreement. And I'd want to know what staff thinks about that too.
Yes, I think there's a couple of different ways you go about it. I mean, obviously if you put it in the code, then it's a code enforceable item, right? You know, sort of the general penalty provisions of the code. That may not be the right, you know, thing for this type of policy, particularly when it's fairly limited in scope in terms of applicability. And so I agree that a resolution or we individually approve these may be another way to do it. Or, you know, alternatively, we can delegate that authority to staff that we can approve a form maybe via resolution and delegate from there to staff that go out and run this program. But there's different options. It's really about how much control the board trustees wants over this versus how much you're, you're willing to delegate to staff.
Victoria, do you have any initial thoughts on that?
I think you, I think it's a good idea to have a good neighbor policy and the application be separate. I think uh you, I think it's a good idea to have a good neighbor policy and the application be separate. Um and be able to be amended because as we have found out, different venues have different managers and different, you know, it's a learning experience every time they change. So I think that would be um a good idea to have. I'm not sure that the good neighbor or the application itself should be part of the resolution. I think that should be able to be adjusted based on our experiences. But the good neighbor policy is great, like that's. And then keeping it on the town website, I think that's a great first step. But what do we do if Friday at five, after everyone's left, a manager calls me and says, I have a different manager this weekend? Do I have to have staff then update our website on a Friday night, you know? That, that could be, I, I think it's great to have it as a starting point, but managers do change.
But phone numbers can remain the same. And my suggestion on that is that if it becomes a responsibility of the music venue.
Sure.
If they choose to have amplified outdoor music, that they must provide a contact person during the hours that music is being watched. Particular cell phone and pass it from employee to employee, or manager on side on, on Friday is different than Saturday. Um I don't think it should be a person necessarily at the venue. It should be a number that can be reached by somebody. And whoever that venue chooses to be in charge of, it's like, it's like a receptionist or a business. Somebody needs to be able to take the call.
I think that's one point that is going to be critical to get input from the businesses on. What's going to work for them?
Do they use a cell phone or is it a person's?
So um, so we'll, we'll figure that out by working with the businesses.
I was like, I've got a number of things on the initial draft in terms of how things are phrased. And, and we've gotten a lot of comments from businesses and huge number of emails, most we've ever received since the, since the great hotel.
Yeah.
Hearing, I think.
I think more, I still, I, I checked, it's actually more.
And, and then, I think you're right.
Yeah.
And then there, and there are a number of things I pointed out that we need to discuss, like if some business, and this happened with Lions then, I don't see it happening with any of our current business. If some business wants to be honorary and not cooperate and ultimately their license is suspended, um should they have an appeal right to the board or is that something we let staff to administer? That's, that's one issue.
Okay, so, so just um, just in terms of, of agenda and um pragmatism here. So we have, um I have an hour legal refresher scheduled for six twenty. Um what we can do is, I think Brandon Frack made that wrong, decide as a board to pump that to a future meeting and continue working on noise.
Sure.
This meeting, or if the board prefers, we can wait and continue this discussion during every other meeting that you all want to do.
I think we should have a fairly detailed discussion at the regular meeting because this is going to be a very well-attended, very well-watched meeting.
Oh, for sure. But the question is, do we want to talk about it more now?
Uh I think, I think the audience will be bigger at the reg, at the regular meeting.
I think they might all be watching, but um, but I get your point.
Let's continue with regular meetings.
Okay, okay. All right, great. So um that looks like a majority. Um so what we're going to do, folks, is we're going to end this part of the workshop. And we're going to get a legal refresher from our attorney about um a number of other things, which you're more than welcome to state or if you're interested. Um our regular meeting starts at seven. So audience business will be shortly after seven. Okay, okay, great. All right, so let's move on then to the legal refresher. Attorney Dibbin.
Thank you. Hopefully my screen share works. If not, I did send it to Dolores so she can, but let me see if this will work. Oh, it's disabled for me.
Oh, let's see.
And I, I sent it to Dolores too. It was easier to pull up.
Yeah, get your meter out. Y'all are brave. You want to stay for the legal refresher?
Could be questioned on the day. This is great, this would be great training when any of you wants to run.
Can you see it, Brandon?
Yep, I can see it just fine.
Now. What are they?
Around fifty.
Fifty.
Oh, we're already in fifty-six. Where you're sitting? Okay, that's good to know.
I mean, a lot of people keep their TV sets at eighty dB. It's kind of crazy.
Yeah, so um, thank you so much, everyone. This is going to be a really kind of short refresher. It's not the full presentation we do. Um you know, beginning of the board term, once a year for boards and commissions. But just really wanted to hit some of the high points um for open meetings, executive sessions, quasi judicial procedures. There has been a lot of questions on those issues recently. Uh so this is going to be kind of a consolidated quick version of that presentation. Um you want to go to the next slide, Dolores, please?
Hold on, Brandon. I'm screen sharing, but I can see it on the wrong screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are seeing it quite. See, it's not letting me move it over. Hold on.
It's weird because I see it just fine. Okay, cool.
Okay, slide.
Yeah, go ahead.
There we go.
Um so the first thing, you know, this, where this all kind of derives from is open meetings law generally. In Colorado, we have the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Sometimes I'll refer to that as OML. It's also called by a lot of people the Sunshine Law. Um and as you guys know, that requires, um you know, most meetings be open to the public, that they're being conducted by a governmental entity. Uh the app, it's an application of a theory that decisions are made, decisions which are made publicly will be both better substantively and are more likely to be followed by the public. The important kind of pieces of the requirements of this law is that, one, it's a governmental entity. So obviously the town of Lyons is a governmental entity. Um so are our boards and commissions. Um you know, so is the county, so is the fire district, a whole number of different agencies. Um and then, you know, there must be three or more members uh discussing public business or a quorum, whatever is fewer. And so for you guys, it's three members of, of the board, anyone in place, and they're, we're talking about public business. That's a meeting. For the county, it gets much more difficult because it's only two commissioners uh creates, you know, a meeting. And having represented some counties, it gets extremely difficult. Sometimes you're trying to do various stuff. Um and having, you know, multiple county commissioners uh there. Again, breaking down kind of the pieces of this, you know, what is public business? And it's really anything related to the policymaking function of the board of trustees. Um discussing a regulation, formal action of any kind, a land use application. Um anything kind of that's before the board of trustees is public business. Um again, boards and commissions are covered on this law, staff are excluded. Um and you know, this meeting can occur a whole bunch of different ways, incur in person, by telephone, electronically or by other means of communications is the, is the word straight from the statute. And that includes email and social media. Um now, there was a twenty twenty minute, I do need to mention uh to the, to the legislation, which does allow for email communication that does not relate to pending legislation or other public business. And so if we're sending an email for purely informational purposes, we're sending a, you know, a survey, um providing information in advance of a board meeting. And the law has now been clarified that does not constitute a public meeting pursuant to law.
I want to stop and ask you a question then. Um so by way of example, like I got an email today from um a guy that had a number of suggestions that I wanted to share with the board, but I didn't send it. Typically, I'd, I'd send it to Dolores and have her send it to the board. But are you saying that it would be okay for me to send an email to the entire board?
I mean, what, the way we prefer to do that is to bundle it up like you suggested, you know, and do them all at once. Um because I think anytime you kind of send an e- email of that nature, it, you, you, there's a prob, the probability there could be reply all situation, right? Which creates a meeting where you're discussing the contents of, of those, um that email. Um if whoever, you know, technically, you know, you send out that email to the board and say, you know, for informational purpose only, we discussed the meeting, do not reply all of this email. That would not constitute a violation of open meetings law pursuant to the act.
That's helpful. Thank you.
But the real danger there is some, is accidental or deliberate reply all, like that's where the problem happens.
Correct. Yeah, that's what we're always kind of fighting against with emails, reply all, um you know, which is um, you know, sometimes deliberate, but more often than not, you know, an accidental thing, um or some kind of slides into what could be considered a meeting.
Yeah, and this is, and so this is, I think it has been an issue with some boards and commissions where they're conducting business over email. And just want to be super clear that that is not permitted.
That's correct. That's not permitted at all.
Yeah, email conversations among boarding commission members are not permitted.
What I have heard done a couple of times is one of our commission chairs will send an email to the board and say, reply to me one-on-one. I'm doing a little poll here. What do you think about this issue?
Also no.
Yeah, I think that's a no. I, I don't think that's understood by all of our commission chairs. I mean, you can't take a poll of a commission one-on-one. That doesn't take it out of their.
And you know, we've been addressing that by having boarding commission chair meetings, but it's not helpful when the chairs do not attend.
Or when they do that a week after having attended.
Yes.
The other issue that's come up several times is, do, does a, a different member from three different groups who want to get together, like let's say we have an issue that is sustainability, environment, and parks and rec. If they each have one member together because they are all agents of the town, is that a meeting?
That is not a meeting. It's only, it's not per board um or per committee basis. And so, so long as there's not three or more from ea- any individual board, um then you, you won't have a prominent open meetings laws. And that stuff happens quite frequently and is completely permitted by the act.
Okay, so that's really good clarification to have. Does the board have any other questions about this? Particularly?
There's a couple of things here, Dolores, for you to advance.
And, and I, I'm, I'm on social media as much as anybody, probably on, on town-related stuff. And I, I use a disclaimer, um that's, that's in our legislative guidelines. But I think it's useful to remember that once you see two board members having participated in a thread for a third member, for a third board member to comment on that thread and even, and say, I agree, then it's a problem.
It's a meeting.
Just, just like if there's two members at a coffee shop talking about stuff, and then a third member comes up and says, hey, if you're talking about the noise orders, I agree with you. Problem.
Does a thumbs up count?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, that's kind of the world we live in now, where, you know, in some cases, like likes have been determined to be, you know, some sort of significant.
Trustee Browning's comments, I see how many trustees have already given a thumbs up.
On social media.
If they're in two, that's it.
That's it.
I mean, so that's why social media is kind of fraught with peril in a lot of ways.
That's why it's, it's, you know, it's even.
Good to avoid if you can.
Yeah, that was my way of saying thanks for addressing that. Okay.
Another question, oh, thank you. Another question I get frequently um is like, you know, what if I'm at the Stone Cup or Oscar Blues? And you know, three board members just happen to be there, is that a meeting, you know? And, and the answer is no. Um so long as public business is not discussed, um the, the law explicitly allows for chance encounters, public gatherings. Um this, you know, no discussing public business of any kind, particularly quasi judicial applications. Um that, that cannot be done by creating an open meetings problem. Um if we know there is going to be multiple trustees in an event of some kind, we will usually go ahead and post that anyways. Just to be extra careful under the law. Um you know, and so if you, we know that's going to happen, three of you are taking a county groundbreaking cer- ceremony. Usually we're pretty good about, you know, letting Dolores know, but if that does happen, you know, we should, we try to notice those just to be extra compliant.
So can I give an example of next Wednesday, the first Sandstone Concert Series? I imagine several of us will be there, but will probably be there to social capacity. That doesn't count, right?
No, no, that's a, I have to call that a chance social, you know, gathering. Um however, you know, just no public business can be discussed, you know.
Right, so we can't all be at their vision without.
You can talk about how bad the Rockies are or, you know, see you next season or whatever else, but you just can't talk about anything before the town.
One other thing that Brandon always mentions at our board and commission training is that even if there's three of you and you know you're not talking business, it is other people's perception that you might be. And that's how we get those, you know, you're having those secret meetings or you're talking on the side about stuff. So there's this perception of reality versus reality. And so that's why, you know, if I see you guys always just say, you know, don't sit together or, you know, don't just say hi to each other and move on, you know, unless you're at the table with the other two or three, that's, that's good. But if a third one comes up.
There was a dust-up within previous board quite a while ago where all the board members were backstage at the plant. Hmm, and um so the, the rumor mill, yeah, I don't think, I think it was prior to your time around you. Um so the, but the rumor mill sometimes gets going. And regardless of what actually happened, it's, it's the perception of what's happening that they really are bringing.
That's a really good point. I mean, a lot of, you know, I can tell you the black and white nature of some of these laws. Uh whoever perception is everything, and part of our ethics code does speak to, you know, being mindful of perceptions. And it's just as important to consider sometimes as that, you know, the black and white, you know, law that exists out there. Um a couple of other quick things before I move on about open meetings. Um you know, we need to, to the extent we can, notice everything twenty-four hours in advance. There are some limited exceptions for that, emergencies of various kinds. There's no way of knowing it had to happen in the last minute and there's good reasons for it. And so we can ratify it at the next meeting. But generally, um you know, any sort of public meeting needs to be noticed twenty-four hours in advance. Um it's not a big deal for so much for the board of trustees, but it has become a very big deal for the boards and commissions. And it's just a helpful reminder is that you cannot hold a meeting in someone's house, at a restaurant, you know, somewhere that which is not um public, can be accessed by the public without buying anything. Um and then is may or may not be ADA accessible. And so um also, you don't want to do, if you open your house up for public meetings, that means anybody can come in, right? You know, and be a part of that. So there's, is a lot of, and you could be liable for whatever happens, you know, at that meeting. So this, you know, if you need to have a meeting, the board, board were pretty good about this, but this may be a reminder for your boards and committee, committees. You know, try to, you know, schedule a town hall, schedule the library. In some cases, we'll schedule a park that's accessible. Um but no meetings at restaurants or people's houses. Uh finally, kind of interesting one that came up and for another client recently, um is that you can't do a secret ballot. You know, you cannot um basically say, we're going to have a public meeting, but we're going to vote on this, but not tell anybody, right? Or it's going to mark down on a, on a tally and then cancel the clerk and just say it passed or failed. Um everybody's vote must be public, which is why we have the little green, you know, red, you know, uh indicators. And we read them out, who was for and who was against.
Wait, hang on a minute. The board had a question.
Had a question, that's the last thing you're on. There was a bill figuring in the legislature one time that would have required big video recordings of every commission. Did that pass?
Did not, thankfully. That would have been a huge problem for a place like Lyons. Uh and even smaller jurisdictions even worse, so.
That was the very.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question because I met in gallery, one or two new gallery on Apple Valley that wants to host the Arts and Men's Commission Meeting. Is it possible then to host a commission meeting outside of an area where there isn't Zoom?
Yeah, you can do that, but it has to be accessible to everyone.
Okay.
So nobody else wants to go.
But they don't have to have Zoom set up and it doesn't have to report it.
No, no.
Okay, I thought it had to be in the library for that reason.
No, no, no.
No, yeah, and if you're taking any action, you will have to take minutes. And so that, and that is anyway a limiting factor, it's, you know, worth considering. Um you know, a lot of people are, I think, are doing, using Zoom for their minutes or doing audio recordings. Um but just keep that in mind. Okay, you got the next one, Dolores, please. Okay, so the kind of flip side of open meetings law, now we kind of know what a meeting is, is the executive session rules, which are really just a, a big exception really to the open meetings law. They're all part of the same act. Um but you know, again, the policy basis here is that it's in the public interest that, you know, um you know, most things are held in public, but there are certain matters where the public is best served if we're able to speak in private. And so the OML um speaks to a number of different basacies for which we can have um those types of discussions. And the one that makes usually the most sense to people is real estate transactions. Um because you know, if we had to speak publicly about what the price we are willing to accept or not accept for a property, whether we are buying or selling, you know, that could damage what, you know, the town could get a property. Or not accept for property, whether we are buying or selling, you know, that could damage what, you know, the town could get a property for, or could be sold property for. Sounds, I think, pretty easy to understand. Um, the other ones that you guys see a lot of attorney advice, um. Personnel matters relating to specific employees. Um, that one's kind of interesting because it can't be, you know, for the town as a whole, it has to be related to a specific employee. And the employee has the ability to have that meeting in public if they so wish. And so, um, that is kind of a unique, one of, one of the various, uh, criteria out there. There's a few more we don't see as often, like security arrangements is another one that sometimes comes up, comes up, but. Uh, these four are the ones that, you know, happen probably ninety-five percent of the time. Um, as you guys know, the purpose of the executive session is deliberate and discussed, you can't make any final decisions or take formal action. Um, the process, you know, we have to put on very specifically on the agenda, you know, what the purpose of the executive session is. Um, the vote requires, uh, two-thirds of, of the quorum, uh, to vote for, um, you know, that to go into, so a super majority. And we're required, um, for everything but for attorney advice, um, to have a recording of what happened. Um, and the reason for that is basically is if there's ever dispute. As to, you know, whether or not the executive session was conducted, uh, correctly. A judge can do what's called in camera review and listen to that. While you're recording and determine whether, whether or not violations have occurred. Um, and so that's the reason for that, you know, if someone put in a court request for an audio recording, you couldn't get that absent a judicial order. Um, in this version, I try to also put in some information from the legislative and ethics policy, so. If you have more questions about how executive sessions work, uh, rule twenty-five point five is the one we want to look at in the legislative policy. And then interestingly, from the ethics policy, um, it reminds trustees that they're required to maintain the confidentiality of any information deemed confidential. Under a whole bunch of things, um, but also including executive sessions. Um, and so that is a, you know, another one out there, also, again, you can see. About perceptions and that being really important, um, as part of the ethics policy.
Brandon, on the, uh, the tapes of the executive sessions. Are those kept in perpetuity or do they have a?
Yep. I think sometimes in practice they are kept longer in some places, but they should be kept for a minimum of ninety days.
Yeah, I've got, I have a question and an example, and this is. I think there's no way around this being a difficult gray area, but I want to put it out there because it, it's happened many times, not just with this board, but on, on prior meetings, and that is. Most executive session discussions probably usually involves instructing negotiators more than anything else. Involve a combination of usually the attorneys there, so if you're getting some attorney advice, if you're negotiating a contract with a third party. You're giving negotiators instructions that we would take this as max and this as a min, you know, and that kind of thing, but also. Often, as part of those discussions, there's background facts. We're doing this because this happened last year, or this is going on right now, and it's a mix of factual background, attorney advice, and negotiating positions. And where things get dicey is if a trustee is participating in that. Citizen comes up to them and says, hey, why are y'all talking about, you know, this particular subject? Well, it's permissible for a trustee to say, well, because this, this and this is going on, but it's not permissible to say, well, because the attorney told us that. And so the issue becomes, to what extent the. Does public information that would be subject to core, if somebody filed a court request and got town emails and things. But that same information is part of an executive session discussion, to what extent has it become privileged? Because it was discussed in an executive session, how do you sort out what's privileged and what's public information? Because, I, I'll give a specific example, I'm not suggesting anything wrong with that, but. Last year, while the IGA was being discussed in executive sessions. There were court requests filed by citizens that got a fair number of emails. And some of the, the subject matter of those emails, that's obviously public information, because it was produced in response to a court request. That subject matter was being discussed in executive session at the same time. What's privileged and what's, what's subject to being discussed?
Well, I mean, it's obviously, as you recognize, a very gray area, it's going to be very factual dependent based on, you know, what it is, the information specifically. You know, but I think as a general guideline, if it was information that was, you know, important. To the, what was being discussed, it was a key part of what was being discussed, it's not otherwise publicly available. Um, you know, that is, I think, fairly, you know, clearly part of the confidential, you know, information or an executive session. Now, if someone comes up and asks for, you know, the US Census data for Lyons. And just happened to also be discussed in executive session. You can give them that information without saying, I got this from an executive session, right? And so if that information is only available from executive session, the nature of your discussion is. This was discussed in an executive session, I think that's where the kind of line is drawn usually, but. Obviously, there's going to be very tough calls on some of this information, um, as to, you know, what carries that privilege and what does not.
That's pretty good standing, I think, information that's only available in the executive session, it's available. Uh, town email between employees or something that is not privileged, but if it's submitted, only came out of an executive session, then you should have made the.
And then what I would add to that is like, you know, you can point someone in that direction, but you can't say, we discussed this. In executive session about it, even if that is publicly information, just kind of the, the means and methods, right, of the information, which would be, you know, typically. That sort of information would be confidential.
All right, Brandon, it's getting a little hard to concentrate, there's people outside screaming. Sure, yeah, shut the window.
Or no, they're taking a photo.
We can open it when they come.
There we go.
Really fix the decimal level.
Window fixes the decimal level.
Forty-five.
All right, so we've got four more minutes.
All right, Dolores, do you want to go ahead and skip four, let's try to cover the big ones. Um, I want to go really quickly on consequences, I think we talk about this very often, um, you know, any action taken in violation of open, open means law is void. And then a very interesting situation camp recently, not one of my clients, but for another city. About something happened a long time ago, but very clearly was a violation of the open means law. You know, is, is there a statute of limitations on that, basically, and I don't think there's a clear answer necessarily on that, so something to keep, keep in mind. Um, a court can, uh, enforce it through an injunction, they can order something to be public, or you redo a meeting and do it in public, they give certain notices. Um, and then you can also make certain portions of executive session public. Um, there's attorney's fees that are available to people who sue us, but we usually cannot get those, a much higher bar for us. And then, of course, there's, um, issues under the ethics code and then a loss of public trust. Next slide. All right, quad judicial, I'll be really short on this one, just because I think we've been over a bunch, I'll talk more about some of the things we can and can't do. Quad judicial versus legislative, quad judicial very narrow, applying policy to a specific set of facts. You know, a land use application by one applicant. Um, versus legislative broad application, announcing, you know, policy and law for the entire town. The general offenses, you know, the ADU ordinance that's up, you know, those are very clearly legislative, um, actions, and. We talked about this in, uh, legislative policy rule twenty-six. So, move on. Um, I won't cover this one too much, I mean, the thing here is that if there's a quad judicial matter that's before. One of your board committees or commissions you're a part of, you can't participate in that meeting, and I think most of us are pretty good about that. Um, that you can only really hear the information during the board meeting, and this comes straight from the ethics policy. All right, next slide. Okay, um, I'm also going to be very short on this one, um, because we have a whole lot of time, but the important thing about quad judicial proceedings is, you know, impartiality. Uh, and there's a number of different ways which impartiality can be breached. Um, you know, one, the one that we talk about probably the most, ex parte communications. Um, basically communicating about the decision outside of the public hearing. And so, um, you know, you can't do that, it's outside, you're basically having a secret. Backfinding, um, discussion, decision-making happening outside the confines of a public hearing. Everything in a quad judicial proceeding needs to be, um, part of the public record and, and is part of the public hearing. Um, prejudgment or bias, you know, this one's usually pretty hard to prove. Um, but it's something about like, I can never vote for X, and I cannot find myself to be impartial about this topic. Um, and I just, you know, I can't make a decision, I could never make a decision, you know, on going the other way. And so if you, if you're biased or prejudgment is to that level, then, you know, you probably have a problem under quad judicial rules. Um, finally, the one that's most clear, the one that requires recusal. Um, versus the other ones are more kind of subjective in their nature. Is, um, financial benefits, pecuniary interests, we call them. If you have any way to financially, um, you know, gain an advantage through participation in a quad judicial proceeding. Um, you cannot participate, uh, pretty clearly, if you do, you could be subject to, um, you know, pretty significant, uh, penalties under state law, and so. I'm always advise you to, you know, one, disclose those and two, not participate. All right, next one. Okay, so I think this is the one that's kind of new information for you guys, um, you know, how do you fix these issues? And, you know, what I'm here to say is that these conflicts exist naturally in small towns, it's not a. You know, ex parte communications happen by accident, right? And the question, um, is not whether, necessarily whether it occur, but to what degree it occurred, right? About whether, um, there were so much discussion that happened, where there was so much, um, evidence obtained outside of the process that somehow. Um, hasn't, has an impact on the impartiality of the, of the entire proceeding, uh, during the public hearing. And so what you ask yourself, you know, there was an issue, you know, was there, do you still have the ability to decide the case fairly and partially? Based solely on the evidence presented at the hearing affect, affected? And then two, is there appearance, appearance of a conflict even if none exists? Um, if you can answer the affirmative that, you know, yes, I can, and I don't think, you know, the appearance was, you know, so much that it creates a real problem for the town. You know, disclosure on the record, um, solves most issues of this nature. Uh, so long as what you're saying is truthful. Um, if you, if you do have, you know, feel like you have crossed the line somehow, or the process would be better preserved if you didn't participate. You know, again, that's not an issue that happens all the time. Um, but the important thing is that, one, you disclose the issue, and then, two, you recuse yourself. Um, and recusal, again, does not mean you get to stay in the room, it means you have to, you take no part in any, any of this, that you have to leave, um, the room. The ethics policy speaks to this in section six, when you get this after this meeting, you know, to, to look at. And then the board can enforce this also, so if you don't believe you have a conflict, the board does. Uh, Lyons legislative policy rule eights is the board to take a vote on whether any individual member has to, uh, um, recuse themselves. And as you guys often do, if there's any question as to, you know, what these rules mean. Um, you can always ask me to help, at least provide the parameters, I can make the decision for you. But I can give you the parameters as to what you should be making your decision on.
Okay, um, cool, Brandon, so we're at time and we have.
That's it, pretty much, so.
Large group outside the doors waiting to come in, oh, look at your picture.
Send these slides to the board. That would be helpful, yeah, and then if, um, if the board has other questions. Um, ask Brandon and maybe Brandon, you can, um, copy the rest of the board on your answer to a question so that we can all benefit from that.
Right, now honestly, I can put back, you know, here are the questions I received and here are the answers, maybe something of that nature.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good, and Dolores, you said you were forwarding it?
Yep, I just hit send.
Excellent, all right, thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Ten, everybody.
Dot com slash Live Street. Okay, and it'll be, it'll be broadcast. So you don't have to stay through the whole thing if you don't want to. Of course, you're welcome.
Thank you, everybody. I am going to call the Monday, June 2nd Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting to Order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Rogan, President, Mayor Pro Tim Williams, Trustee Cameron, Trustee Dottie, Trustee Lowell, Trustee Brownie, and Trustee Delman.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasurable agents.
The pleasurable agents of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, while they should give them the power in the municipal, with the protection of the world.
Thank you, everyone. I'd ask that you please be quiet. The meeting has started. Thank you. I'm gonna read the land acknowledgement, then we're gonna take a reflective moment of silence, and then before we approve the agenda, Mayor Pro Tom Williams has a few words to say. We must acknowledge with respect as non-native people that the land on which we stand, live, and learn is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapahoe peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado.
It's been a troubling day and a half for all of us who live in Boulder County, for all of us who live in Lyons, for all of us who live in Colorado, for all of us who give a damn about people. It's been a tough day and a half. I always get a lot of comfort from the words of Wendell Berry, who I know is a favorite of many of you here. Kentucky poet, writer, activist. His poem, "The Peace of Wild Things," goes like this. When despair for the world grows in me and I wake in the night at the least sound in fear of what my life and my children's lives may be, I go and lie down where the wood ring rests, rests in his beauty of the water and the great heron feeds. I come into the peace of wild things who do not tax their life with forethought of grief. I come into the presence of still water and I feel above me the day-blind stars waiting with their light, waiting with their light. For a moment, I rest in the grace of the world and I'm free. One more time, the words of Wendell Berry. When despair for the world grows in me and I wake in the night at the least sound in fear of what my life and my children's lives may be, I go and lie down where the wood ring rests in his beauty of the water and the great heron feeds. I come into the peace of wild things who do not tax their lives with forethought and grief. I come into the presence of still water and I feel above me the day-blind stars waiting with their light. For a moment, for a time, I rest in the grace of the world and I'm free. You know, it's tragic that ninety-nine percent of the evil done in the world is done by people who are one hundred percent convinced they are right. I have great concerns for our Jewish community, particularly for all those who serve in a public position in an elected office, including our mayor. I have great concern for my friends who were elected in this state who were Palestinian and abhor what happened in Boulder yesterday. An appeal, appeal to all of us in this town, as we so often do, that we would allow our better angels to control our most volatile moments and remind us the only thing that lasts is love. Thank you.
We're gonna make on for a few more, okay? Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Anyone like to amend the agenda? Trustee, no? I would like to make two motions to amend the agenda. The first is to move the Pride Month memorial proclamation to directly after this item. I understand there's some folks here from Rocky Mountain quality here for that, and feel like it would be great to do that for them, and so if they need to agree with that. And then finally, I would like to move general business item number one, which is discussion directions. The workshop about the noise ordinance to directly after ordinances and public hearings and before consent agenda, since that is the most popular item of the year. Is there a second to that? Any discussion? Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
That motion passes your amendment.
Any other amendments or discussions? All right, let's vote on the agenda as amended.
Motion passes your amendment.
Great. Thank you. Okay, it has been my great pleasure and pride to read the Town of Lyons proclamation for Pride Month. Is, is the person from Rocky Mountain equality here? Whereas the Lyons Board of Trustees and staff have permitted to make Lyons an inclusive and welcoming community for all, including the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas Lyons recognizes that visibility, advocacy, local engagement, and education are vital to creating a community where all individuals can live safely and free from discrimination. And whereas June is celebrated nationally and internationally as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, commemorating the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising in New York City, a pivotal event in the movement for LGBTQ plus rights and liberation. And whereas all members of the Lyons community, including those who identify as part of the LGBTQ plus community, have the right to feel safe, not be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of harassment. And whereas the town has added protections for LGBTQ plus individuals and families, including partner health benefits and an inclusive employee nondiscrimination policy. And whereas supporting Lyons LGBTQ plus community also aligns with the town's strategic objective to co-create a more inclusive and equitable community that promotes unity and honors diversity. And whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to honor the history of the LGBTQ plus rights movement, to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality, and to celebrate Lyons LGBTQ plus residents. And whereas we as a town and as individuals desire to practice respect, kindness, and understanding, and teach these traits to future generations. And whereas the Town of Lyons affirms its commitment to the promotion and protection of the human rights of LGBTQ plus residents in the community and urges all residents to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Now therefore, I, Holly Rogan, Mayor of the Town of Lyons, do hereby declare the month of June twenty twenty-five as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Lyons. And we'll, we'll get a signed copy of this. All right, thank you, everybody. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for. It's time for audience business, and here is how this is gonna go. There's a sign up sheet, so hopefully you signed up. If you did not sign up and you want to speak, don't worry, we'll get to you after we get through the list. When you approach the podium, you'll state your name and address for the record here. Doesn't matter whether you live in Lyons or not, but we do need to know that. When you begin your remarks, you will have three minutes. If there are fewer than ten people, it's four minutes. Clearly, there are more than ten people, so we're gonna go to three minutes. There's gonna be a timer up there that clerk Vasquez is gonna be running, so you'll be able to see where you are when it comes to time. Feel free, if you would like, to simply agree with the person who went ahead of you. You can state your name and address and say, I agree with what so-and-so has said. And that's also taken into consideration, so feel free to do that. Please refrain from cheering, booing, applauding. If you would like to show your support, you can do the old jazz hands, okay, or give us the thumbs up, okay? Address the entire board, not individual board members, please. And after we're done, after everybody has had the opportunity to speak, which I don't know, might be midnight, we're not sure. At that time, the board has the opportunity to address the comments that we've heard, so we'll go one by one for board members to address the comments. And then we also give staff an opportunity to respond. Did I forget anything, Trux?
Did you mention only address town business?
Yes, and we're only addressing town business, please. All right.
First, we have Sam Scruby, followed by Pat McFort. Is that right?
And if you could speak up for the benefit of the folks who are in back of the room and outside, that would be
My name's Sam Scruby. I live at
I'm sorry, which was your name?
Oh, that's okay. You would not be the first person to do that. I live at forty, forty-eight fifty-five Tanglewood Court. I am a co-owner of Main Stage Brewing. I just wanted to go ahead and voice my support for the live music community here, and also just in the first draft of the ordinance that would not be great for the live music community here. I think music has a wonderful, wonderful place in bringing people together, and trying to stifle that could be driving people apart, and that's sometimes what we see. And I will not spend too much time because I think a lot of people want to speak. But with the Good Neighbor Agreement, I would say as a business owner, having to send one of our employees or one of our managers up to deal with a complaint under the ordinance could be putting our employees in a risky position. So I would ask that you think about redoing that part of it. And the test level would not allow us to have live music in our business and would potentially not make us have a viable business. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, this is Court, followed by Michael Richardson.
Hello, I'm Pat McCourt. I live in seven nine seven Sandstone Drive. I'd like to say that when I moved here over twenty-five years ago, the first thing that I was asked was not, why did you move to Lyons? It was not, where did you come from? It was, what instrument do you play? This is a music town. We have to be very careful not to avoid impacting that beautiful thing that we have. And we need to support our musicians in town and around with a place to come and play. I, I'm afraid this is a little bit like somebody moves in next to a farm and then complains about the animals. You gotta realize what this town is. And so the most, the loudest music I've ever heard, a long time, on the other side of town is planted bluegrass. And we want to be, we must be careful not to shut them down. And as the fourteenth amendment says, everybody is equal under the law. You can't say, oh, you can go and be loud, but these people can't be loud. I think we need to be very careful what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Richardson, followed by Asa Firestone.
Thank you, Mike. My name's Mike Richardson. I live at fifteen thirty-five Apple Valley Road. Is that, is that all the details we need? I'm pretty much in agreement with everybody they said. Thank you all for the work that you do. You do not have an easy job here to resolve this. I think it's, it's tricky. I think clearly sixty-five decibel level limit is way too low. I played a band in town. We would, we have drums. It would just stop us from being able to play. And I think a great compromise is to set time that people can play music in the lab. And and then have other times where it would be quiet. I think that nine o'clock is too early. I think that on Friday and Saturday nights when people come together, it's a wonderful thing that happens in this town with everybody getting together and listening to music and enjoying their neighbors, meeting new people. And it would really be a shame to stifle that with a noise ordinance that didn't allow for music to be played in this town. I'm gonna keep it real short. Thank you all. I really appreciate it. You guys do a great job, and this is gonna be
Thank you. Appreciate that. But could someone ask the folks outside if possible to keep it down a little bit because we're having trouble hearing the speakers?
They can't hear inside.
But it's like, it's like when you're on the phone and you have that echo, you can hear yourself like a half second off. But whoa, we'll make the best of it.
Would you please reiterate or clarify with the community that this is not the first reading of an ordinance?
Thank you. Yeah, so just so, thank you. So just so everybody knows, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is not the first reading of an ordinance. We, we had a workshop earlier. We're talking about what we want to see in an ordinance. There has never been a vote scheduled for anything tonight, so we're not voting on anything tonight. We're talking about what we want to see in the first draft of an ordinance. And believe me, there will be plenty of warning about when there will be a first and second reading of an ordinance. An ordinance takes two readings to become a law. The first reading, the board discusses it. We maybe make some changes. We set a second reading in public hearings. So the second reading is when the public constituents speak to an ordinance, although you can talk about it during audience business at any meeting. This doesn't count for your time, I said, don't worry. But just, just so you know, just in case anybody's concerned that we're voting on something tonight, we are not. So Victoria, thank you very much for that reminder. And I'll make that statement again when we take this up during general business.
Okay.
Awesome. Sounds like there'll be two more parties for us. So my name is Asa Firestone. I live at three twenty-three Stickney Street. So first off, thank you. Well, I'm the owner of the Rock Garden and A Lodge. So I do have a special interest in this, but as a, as a resident, I also have even a greater interest in this because music and convening people together in this town is what makes Lyons so special, as Sam pointed out, and as everybody before me has pointed out. So first off, thank you to the Board of Trustees and the town staff. I know you have the community's interests at heart, and we really do appreciate you all, and we know how difficult of a job this is, especially in something like this. Lyons is music. In contrast, we're not Golden or Boulder or Austin. We should set our own path and lean into what makes us special, what makes us click, and what brings us together. Because what brings us together in Lyons might not be the same that brings people together in Golden. I have total empathy for those who are irritated by music and noise. I have a two-year-old, and I don't want my two-year-old to be woken up in the middle of the night with loud music. There's no doubt. I know that for myself and my business, we are always open to work with people if we're called or if it's too loud. But I've never once gotten a call, and my number is super easy to find. I'm a hotel, hotelier. I get calls at two in the morning from a guest. I get calls all the time. It drives my wife crazy because I'm always on my cellphone, but I am very easy to find, and I have not once gotten a complaint. Nobody once has called me and said, and I've never gotten a voicemail. I didn't miss it. It is not, so to me, this has been a problem that seems like it's a solution looking for a problem. But the decibel measuring seems very hard to consistently measure, and so there needs to be resources and instruction if that's to be implemented. The three strikes, you're out fines and a year ban could destroy a business like ours. But more importantly, it could prevent so much community and connection from happening. And we really need to be careful with implementing something with such high, you know, regulations and consequences for a business. I'm open to time constrictions. I think ten PM is totally reasonable on weekends. I think nine is just too early on weekends, honestly. We also absolutely need to equalize power between complements and venues. So currently, the proposal...
If you want, if you want to send us your, the rest of your remarks in email or hand them to somebody else to speak, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I, I just want to point out that the town, if this is going to go through, the town needs to be under the same issues, the same law, which would apply to festivals and to the Sandstone Park. And the river, don't kill the river.
Mark Diamond is next, followed by Kaylee Sue Pinello.
Hi, Mark Diamond, one five five Flintway in Broome Field. I've been a professional full-time musician for fifty years. That's why I came to your town to hear what was going on. Couple things. One thing that's not been discussed at all is dynamics. When you're doing decibels, you know, music isn't always here. It does this. It flows. You get a little loud. You build it up, and then you get a little soft. So it's a flow. It's not always at this. So that's just something to consider. And music, it's music. It's not a Harley Davidson. It's not a dump truck. It's not an ambulance. It's not a jet plane. All these things pound us still, you know, every day in our environment. We're talking about music, a universal language that brings people together. And I love the people that have been talking about Lyons. I've been playing music in Lyons for forty years in various venues. As far as time limits, nine o'clock, you know, we do lots of weddings. I play a lot of weddings in this town and at wonderful, beautiful venues. And we've had people, because I've, we, we had to be all acoustic, and we couldn't amplify. And then we tried these little battery speakers, and we just, because people were like, can't you turn up? And we're like, no, we can't. Well, we can't hear you. And I'm like, I'm sorry. So people want to hear the music. They want to feel the music and be a part of it, and that's what we offer. And, and just, I'm, I'm a jazz guy, so I'm improvising, but the time limit, yeah, I mean, we often play till ten o'clock. Nine o'clock certainly on a weekend seems really way too early. People are just kind of getting going, and when we say we're done at ten, they're like, come on, you're kidding me. Play more. So I would at least say a ten o'clock limit. I, I, and people have said, I respect and appreciate what you all do, and I know you care for the town. And there's always somebody, if, if there's a hundred people digging the music, there's one person, you're too... We have a thing. You guys are great, but can you turn down? We hear that. So there's always somebody that's not going to be happy about it. And, but it's, it's not noise. It's, it's like a soothing sound. A kid could go to sleep hearing some distant music. It's... I think I'm going to be done, but good luck. Please don't kill music in Lyons and enjoy music wherever you go. Thank you.
Kaylee Sue Pinello, followed by Robbie Mandel.
Kaylee Sue Pinello, three twenty-six Evans. I feel it's my place to speak from my heart regarding the changes I have seen within pre-flood and post-flood in thirty-five years. From my observations and concerns regarding the very spirit and soul we call Lyons, I see a community crisis from the divisional laws, who we were, where we were, and where we came from, and the development of our future. We did not build up this town from destruction and rubble from a hundred-year flood to be bought and forgotten. Please just try to imagine the unimaginable. Imagine three months with no amenities. That's water and electricity. Do you know what it's like not to be able to flush your toilet? The loss of over a hundred homes consisting of one family per home throws up a huge loss of locals. We are separated into five separate islands because there was no physical access to each island. Waking up in the morning to go stand in line at the Salvation Army for blankets, boots, bleach, and coffee. How about standing in line each morning for a porta potty? Not to mention the loss of everything you ever knew as your home and your past memories. Within that disaster, we experienced neighbors working with neighbors. They might not have ever met. Neighbors respecting neighbors for their perseverance through extreme loss. We all needed help, and we all wanted to help. Disaster strips away all ego you once thought you were and everything you ever felt about religion, politics, finances, or age. There was no time to divide and no time to hate. My Lyons was built on music, motorcycles, black powder guns, rodeos, fireworks, flash walls, dancing in the street, because fun usually gets noisy. Why would a town want to squash the very revenue they seek? You can't invite people to a party and tell them to shut up. Would you ever go back to that party again? Most post-flood individuals are living here for the same reason we have grown to care and love and create. I feel like we all have good intentions, but for different standards of a way of life. I'm seeing two cogs here. I'm seeing one cog being the focus of making more money with the time to volunteer research grants and follow through on their ideas of what their town should look like. I see on the other side of the cog the loss of spirit of heritage. We should be helping and celebrating our artists that are struggling just to hold down jobs and families and rents to contribute to our very roots of what was to be the soul of our Lyons. Stifling one's life force or bliss is a direct attack on their vulnerable voice and complete sense of being. Bliss is vulnerable space that is usually meant to be shared. Sharing that vulnerable space creates a tight community. We are losing a side of an entire demographic. Imagine a force we could bring those two post and pre-flood cogs closer, taking care of our locals, building them up, and appreciate them for sharing their gifts, building up this torn community and making unity a top priority to bring your destination space. That's revenue, that's much closer to community.
Thank you. Thank you. Robbie Mandel, followed by Chris Hadley.
Well, this is looking more difficult than I thought. Can I sing it?
Yeah.
So, okay, really?
Yeah. We're hoping we're going to get a song.
Robbie Mandel, song and a dance. Robbie Mandel, two twenty-four Seward Avenue. And I don't know how many people complained about the noise of music in order to get the council going, but there's a lot of people here that showed up. And that's a lot of people, anyway. But we're talking about the noise in the town, and I'm going to try to use some of the thoughts I had all day. But as, as far as the decimals and the noise, well, the problem is we have two places that are outside and only get here in summertime. If they don't make their money in the summertime, well, we lose some of the town because we, we need to bring people here, and it is a music town. I won't go into that because somebody else did. But, you know, we should encourage that. We should actually use that to make it more of a music town. Some of my ideas was, you know, to, because we have the bluegrass thing. It's a very big thing. In other, in other states, they have whole towns with art. It's an art town. Oh, it's a craft town. So we, we can have a music town. And one of my thoughts is that we, it's all about money, of course. But we find money for things like, you know, sidewalks that are twenty feet long or twenty feet wide and stuff like that. But we can't find money to like have a art council, well, art, you know, place. Or, so what I'm getting at is the, the two places that are outside that need to be loud, somewhat loud. Well, it would be great if they, we had a thing like Boulder where it's, you know, it's a back, a backdrop. But that costs a lot of money and a lot of engineering and a lot of architecture. And, and people that just need the summer to get through the winter in these places can't really afford that. How can we help that? First of all, make, what's it called? Shells, band shells. Because then the music would just face towards more the town than the back of that part of town where the, those people are probably hearing it more than getting through the main street and stuff like that. And the other thing is that, you know, maybe use this to make an economy here, which is the bluegrass. You know, you don't have to like bluegrass, okay? But it's, it's our music, and it's our town. Everybody plays it here, and everybody's a musician, every other house. So what about a proposal of even trying to get money to make a bluegrass museum? So as people don't just go through Estes Park, they stop here to eat something because there'll be something to see instead of just parks that they can go to, and we can't in the summertime. I'm putting a few things in here. And, you know, and a sidewalk all the way from thirty-sixty here. Why can't we get some money to like build something like that to, to increase the economy of the music in this town? That's it.
Ann Lee, followed by Jacob Beard. Lou, Chris Hadley, six three oh seven Sedona Hills Drive. I actually live in Berthis. I live here in Lyons. I came down just really to support all these people. You guys have a wonderful town. I've lived here for three years, had the opportunity to go to Fort Collins, Longmont, love with mine for all of them. We come down here probably three to four times a month, spend money in the restaurants, spend money at the bars, and really to listen to the music. And we do that because we love music, and we've actually come to love some of the people here, too. So to the extent that there's any type of mitigation of what makes Lyons a special place, you know, as an outsider, not being from Lyons, I would, I would really, really encourage you to think about what you're doing because it can stifle it very, very quickly. To the extent that other people that live in other communities come to Lyons because of the people and the music, you're going to jeopardize that, and that would be a tragedy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Rob Pate.
Hello, Jake Beard, ten fifty-five Fifth Avenue. I wanted to come out and speak in support of our local businesses. I feel that we derive so much more value from them than what we put into them. I wanted to share an anecdote. We moved here in twenty twenty during the pandemic. And Main Stage, the beer garden there, was a lifeline for us, and it's still a lifeline for us. It's a third space that we can go with our kid, and, and we just, we just, it's just a very special and important place for us. And I, I feel like it's not easy to run a business here in this town because you have to deal with the off-season, and then you have to make up your revenue in the on-season. So I'd like to see that we give the local businesses here the tools that they need to succeed. And that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob? Followed by Susan Anderson.
I'll probably just be a little bit blubbery because I'm very, I'm very sentimental about the subject of music. Music is something I've been... Sorry, Rob Pate. I live on Blue Mountain Road. I work a lot in, in town with music. I have a seven-piece band. We do a lot of down home flavors. We have horns, a full rhythm section, three-part harmonies. It's a nice big sound. Everything has to be arranged, written, booked, the whole bit. I have another band, which is a ten-piece band, which is a Brazilian kind of carnival related to Mardi Gras music. I'm a big fan of the Mardi Gras music, but I've been, I don't know. I don't know if I came to this life with a, with almost like a musical problem. Like, it's the first thought that comes into my head when I wake up in the morning. It's the puzzle. I love the puzzle music. It's endless. You can put it up at night, and go to sleep, and you can pick it up the next day, and the puzzle gets better and bigger and better. And so now I'll just read a little bit of what I've been hearing. I do think that music is the single, single subject in, or human history that encompasses language, emotional language, math, all the math, science, culture, endlessly compelling puzzle, a logic puzzle, but also an emotional puzzle. Music helps us to, is to see ourselves in a connective way. What the audience is seeing when they're watching a good band is connective logic and mental energies that are going in for the purpose of making something beautiful. That, and most of the players that I know around here are of that quality where they are making beautiful things. I've toured for two decades, and I've been in small towns that don't have much of a music scene. And I am here to tell you that Lyons is so gifted in that sense. And your next generation of, of children need to have music in their lives to know that they can explore all these subjects. Not that they have to devote their lives to playing music because that's a hard part of it. But let me just get on with the other stuff. I think where music is suppressed, we can find the most short-sighted perspectives. I think we can find an atrophy in the higher of human pursuits, a pursuit to find harmony in ourselves for ourselves and harmony to find it in the world around us. It has a real, and Lyons has real lifelong devoted and dedicated and highly skilled creators of music. It's a very inspired place, and I'm wary that the proposition will confuse the notion that music is not a wonderful gift, but a nuisance that has to be occurred. We have people in this town that treat music as a sacred subject and treat the subject or the stage as a platform to celebrate that work. I go out and listen to a lot of music, and it's, yes, thank you very much.
Susan, followed by Gary LaFever.
Hi, I'm Susan Anderson. I live at four thirty-four Stickney Street. And I just had a couple of concerns and just questions. First of all, in Lyons, you know, businesses and residential, they're in pretty close proximity. And my hope is that we can all work together to balance residence tranquility with vibrant urban life. And I also just want to know, it's, it's hard to understand what these decibel levels are without actually hearing it, you know? So what does eighty-five decibels mean? You know, I don't know if you would have maybe a group of people that, if you have residence and... and, and musicians and somebody from the town be able to test decibels and see what really is loud. I mean, I don't know how you guys pick the decibel level, is my question. And so when, when I was reading about that, you know, what is fifty-five decibels? And, and also how do you, how would you go about enforcing, you know, if you did have a discipline? So that's kind of what I would, as a resident, would like to understand it. But I totally, I love music and I support music. And I think that we should be able as a town to work together and find something that works for it. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Gary? Followed by David Tiller.
My name is Gary LaFever. I live at one seven four Blueview Road. And I apologize in advance, but out of respect for you, I'm gonna read so I can get it done in time. But I would, please don't think this isn't important to me. I've lived in Lyons for twenty-four years. For the first several of those years, I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce. I left that position because we did not get strong support from the board and the mayor at that time. The first thing I want to do is thank you. Because I think what you guys have done and are doing, and the DAF is doing for small businesses, particularly a music-oriented business, has turned this town around. The people who come here to listen to the music and eat at these venues, et cetera, are great for the town. I'm here because I'm really concerned as to the economic impact on the town and the businesses of the proposed ordinance. And I actually have three suggestions, very actionable suggestions for you to consider. One, equality of venues. Whatever hours and decibel levels are set should apply equally to town venues and Planet Bluegrass. As far as I'm concerned, music is music and decibels are decibels and hours are hours. So I think there should be equality across all venues. Two, I think you should consider more flexible hours. Now, understanding we're trying to balance here and that's what really makes your jobs difficult. You have both the residents and you have those performing. But I think you could come up with something that's a lot more flexible than what has been proposed. So I would suggest later hours. And lastly, higher decibel limits. I think with those three things in mind, you can successfully balance all the variety of interests that you have and continue to do a great job that you've done. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
David? All right. Followed by Trevor Johnson.
I'm gonna be quick. But I wanted to use this moment to like, oh, David Tiller, eight twenty-four Third Avenue. Not, I think there's, this is an opportunity actually, because just sort of self observancy. Lyons has a larger percentage per capita of musicians than pretty much almost any town in the U.S., except for maybe Nashville. And, and businesses with the, we have like, what, at least, I don't know, at least six wedding venues. I have these businesses on the streets. I'm just making this point that everybody else has made. But I think we should actually almost, and I love to sleep. I think sleeping is necessary. So we do have to consider that. We have to consider, that's not something we can't consider. But I, I, I think we should figure out how to, you know, make, make it work so that music is thriving here because otherwise we will lose our time and what everybody else has already said. So thanks.
Thank you.
Oh.
You have a song?
I do, but I'm not gonna sing it right now. I, I had a metaphor that I forgot to say. It's like, people who, if you move to Lyons, it's, and you don't wanna hear music very loud. It's sort of like a mouse making a nest in a guitar. You basically, it's like, and not wanting to hear the guitar played. It's like.
Trevor followed by Shawna.
My name is Trevor Johnson. I live at five six eight seven Monarch Road in unincorporated Boulder County. Music holds deep cultural and communal significance in the town of Lyons. Mainstage Brewing, Oscar Blues, Planet Bluegrass, and before that, a square dance group called The Red Rocks Ramblers. It was founded by my grandparents, Laverne and Laverne Johnson. Grandma and grandpa spent a lot of time at these meetings. And I assure you, if they were still here, they would not be happy about turning down music and going home early from their square dances. I'm concerned any proposed decimal and time limits are potentially too restrictive and could hinder the local economy and mute the town's identity. I implore you to consider the most relaxed restrictions imaginable in favor of music, dancing, and the town of Lyons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Donna Lee followed by Chris LePleat.
Charlie Lee, one fifty-six Eleventh Avenue. I do have to say, we all can say we might know what Laverne might do here. Thank you for that, by the way. That's awesome. She is. I remember the feet that used to be here. I had a set thing that I was going to say, but I also kind of wanted to pick some things to say that maybe I didn't think had been said. And to answer the question about what are dB levels? And, and we did have a little demonstration here earlier for what that is. And I'm not sure everybody is clear about it even now because it is kind of a moving target based on many different things. For example, just the time I've been sitting in here, the highest dB reading that I've had was seventy. So there's a saying that's very popular called, "Don't kill the messenger." And I would like to say that in this town, music is the messenger. And it's the messenger of a lot of things that not only speak to the heart and speak to community and bring people together, but as the owner of Ranch House West, I see it all the time. When we have sing-alongs and everybody is singing together, I can't tell you how many people come in and they meet for the first time. They exchange phone numbers. There is a consensus of community and love and passion that music carries with it, and it is absolute. So not to kill the messenger is not to kill the music. And to kill music would be to kill not just connection and joy and community and not just tax revenues. And we already have a block of lighted things that have gone down the pike before us. We know what those are. But I would mostly say, I may, I supported myself playing music for over twenty years solely. And I know a lot of people here who do that and they need, they need us. They need this town and they need venues like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna.
Chris followed by Willow Fitzgerald. No, you're good. Okay, Willow Fitzgerald.
It's for reading that. I know it was sad handwriting.
It's one of the best I've seen so far.
Oh, my. Hi, I'm Willow Fitzgerald. I live at two one nine Fifth Avenue. Hold for applause. Yes. Fifth Avenue is where the motorcycles go by twenty-five times a day at maybe, you tell me, fifty miles an hour? Seventy miles an hour? They are loud. They wake me up in the morning. They wake me up at night. Fifth Avenue has airplanes going over, helicopters going over. Fifth Avenue has a lovely neighbor who weed whacks constantly. I don't, I remember when the survey came out. The question was there. Are there other forms of sound that bother you? Yes, the answer is yes. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about gifts. This town has so many gifts. That's what brought me here as a child to Planet Bluegrass. That's what brought me here as an adult to build my life in a town that's based around art and community and third space. This town, I walked across town an hour ago. I found tiny pieces of beautiful glass on the ground. I found this very odd postcard. I found my friends singing songs with a guitar on Main Street. That's why I came to Lyons. I want to offer you the gift of some solutions that have been mentioned before. It seems like the decibel level is a challenge for everyone. I cannot imagine sixty-five decibels as being appropriate. I think I'm speaking loudly or louder, a little nervous, louder than that right now. The idea of helping venues create stages that are going to condense the noise and are going to direct things is a gift. The idea of helping support downtown restaurants and bars in understanding how they can be better neighbors is a gift. Helping them communicate with the people around them is a gift. But also, third space is a gift. Art on Main Street is a gift. And this town, you have given that to us. Let's see, we want solutions. Thank you for your words from Wendell Berry. That was so glorious. And could it have been more of a notion of what this town means to all of us? We all hold that little gem of art in our lives. The other things that are really special about this town are local gigs and ten PM. The gift of a local gig allows these musicians around here to make a living without getting on an airplane at six AM and missing their partner for two weekends a month, you know? That's huge. The gift of ten PM means that I can get out at eight PM, dance for two hours, buy two beers, and be in bed by ten thirty. Thank you for that. We already closed down most bars here at ten PM. I don't see why shaving an hour off is gonna change anything for anybody. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being you.
Dave followed by John Biggar.
Yeah, Caitlin? Yeah, okay, sweetie. Hi, I'm gonna read some stuff because I tend to be, oh, yeah, sorry, Kate Little. I'm at twenty-seven oh one County Road, thirty-seven E. And I'm gonna read, I get longer than two. So I'm a local, I grew up here. I was born and raised here. I left for a long time and I came back. And I plan to be here probably for the rest of my life. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, in this ordinance, it reads as unreasonable noise. And I would implore you all to explore what is reasonable. I know I'm seconding a lot of people on that. Sixty-five decibels seems pretty low. I also want to second David Tiller's comment. Music doesn't just impact Lyons. Music in Lyons impacts the music community as a whole. Everywhere I go, I can always find a friend almost immediately being from this town. And that, that friend becomes a lifelong friend almost immediately. Music in this town, it goes way beyond just the venues on Main Street. Also, I wanted to mention the, in the proposed draft that was posted, section ten dash eleven twenty D, it doesn't, that ordinance, or that phrase doesn't specify music venues. And so I would like this to be clarified that this is not just referring to, or whether it's referring to music venues or private residences. I feel like venues that are making an income from music is a very different thing than people playing on their own property. And without, without that clarification, that could greatly inhibit not just the music venues, but the local musicians, their ability to rehearse, perform, and enjoy their own space. I know I'm seconding a lot of people here, but Lyons is a deep, deep community and a lot of that foundation is music. I'm a musician because I grew up in this town, because I was exposed to music all the time. I know what community feels like in these times where so many people don't because of the music in this town. And I would very much implore you all, along with everybody else here, to think very clearly about how this type of noise ordinance can erode the cornerstone, the cornerstones of the foundation of this community. And I think that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, John followed by Amy Glenn.
All right, hey, I'm John Biggar. I live at six fifty-five Kyle Road up in Pinewood. And I come down to Lyons all the time. I love Lyons. I love it. I love Lyons businesses. And I love the soul of Lyons. And for many of us, probably all of us here, the soul of Lyons is defined by its music scene. As a musician, I really appreciate being able to play the open mic that ASA allows us to use at Rock Garden. You know, I, I love playing at Oscar Blues during the wintertime. They allow us to do that there. I love going to Mainstage because, man, on a sunny day, and if you've ever been to Mainstage on a sunny day on the weekend and seen a great band, one of the many that we've had here, I mean, Big Richard started there. Big Richard freaking started there. And now they're touring the country and you've got the Fretliners, you've got High Lonesome, all of these bands that come out of Lyons. They, we are creating a scene here that is huge. As others have said, it, it is absolutely invaluable. It, it serves all of us. And these businesses serve all of us. At Mainstage, Eric mans the sound himself. He is very strict on the decibel level there, on the, the level of music there. And he has bands turn it down if he feels it's too loud. We've got self-governing people. ASA does the same thing at Rock Garden. Shawna does the same thing at Ranch House West. We've already got this in place. We don't need to implement strict regulations that inhibit the soul of this town. So thank you and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Amy?
Hi, my name is Amy Glenni and I live at sixty-three Applebee Drive up in Pinewood also. I've lived in Pinewood Springs since two thousand and three. And before that, I lived in Boulder. I've been playing music off and on full-time since nineteen ninety-five. I've seen a lot of businesses in Lyons fail. I've seen a lot of locals leave because they didn't have a place to work. They didn't have a way to make a living here. And I've never seen the kind of community in Lyons that I see now, even during the flood, even when we were all so desperately dependent on one another. It is different now because so many people are hungry for community. They're hungry for connection. They're hungry for music after COVID pandemic. I, I really have seen venues shut down in Estes Park because of noise ordinances and because of neighbors complaining. And I think it's very short-sighted to place very restrictive ordinances that will cost Lyons the businesses and more importantly, the community. One more thing about the, the businesses right now that are supporting local musicians. Lyons is unique. There's really no place like it around besides Fort Collins because venues pay the musicians a fair wage. Musicians spend hours and hours lugging equipment, setting up, practicing, taking equipment down. You know, for some gigs, I've, I've made two or three dollars an hour for, you know, eight hours of work, including travel time, just so I can play locally. Eric and ASA and the people that run the venues in this town, they pay the musicians. And the musicians want to spend time here and live here and spend money here, as well as all the people who come to town to hear them. So thank you for all your work. You're doing something really important. And I know you're gonna take into account all the things that, that we've said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? I was like, oh, my gosh. I was about to ask you how many, how people.
There might be people that didn't.
Yeah, would you go see?
I was about to ask you, sorry, how many more people were on the list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This listener.
My name's, sorry, you can one second.
All right, we, we have some more speakers.
My name's Heather Lawton and I live on Carter Drive. And I wanna, I agree with everything that's been said so far, including the thing about the motorcycles. And I wanna say that, you know, is there a way to make a different noise decibel for things like barking dogs and motorcycles and things that disturb you when you're trying to sleep? And music is, like, you can sleep. It kind of lulls you to sleep. And I'm dealing with downstairs dog that's barking all the time and wakes me up all hours after midnight before five AM. And it's difficult and the, it's not even being enforced, the, the noise ordinances that are there for the dog. And I think, like I said, music, I think that's wonderful and it's easy to sleep to. And it does bring community and it's part of the culture of the town. But things like barking dogs and motorcycles maybe should be treated differently and enforced, the, the thing with the dogs not being enforced. And the woman doesn't even give it any voice commands either. So, yeah, I think music, great. Dogs and motorcycles, no.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak from the board?
Hello, how you doing? My name is Heath Burgess and I live on one hundred Open Range Road.
My name is Heath Burgess, and I live on 100 Open Range Road, just up near Blue Mountain. I was born in Longmont, grew up there. I've been up here almost 10 years. And it says nothing to do with it, but I was addicted to opioids for over 20 years. Five years ago, when COVID hit, I decided to make a change, and I left it behind. And one of the biggest healers in my life has been the animals. I'm a ranch hand. I'm blessed to be around them always, and music. I've befriended a beautiful community here with music. And those positive vibrations in that community and the joy that we all get together with strangers sometimes, people in our community we don't even know, that we, like they were saying earlier, I agree with everyone else here, exchanging numbers, and you meet somebody and you're creating this bond, right? And I think showing kindness and respect to everyone is huge, first and foremost. But honoring what this town has been made of and what has built this town, that's a beautiful thing, man. So I know everyone in this room is a beautiful human being. We all are. We just have to see it in ourselves, share it with others, right? And that's what music does for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was somebody else.
Hello. Thank you all, appreciate it. My name's Andy Botcher, and I live on Stickney, and I'm one of the newest residents of Lyons. My wife and I have been fortunate to move here within the past year and buy a home. Our first experience with Lyons was in 2021, and we knew something was different right off the bat. We were very fortunate to have friends bring us here for mountain biking and beers afterwards and some live music. We followed that with a couple of years of traveling the world, trying to find the perfect place, the place that embodies community, it has that outdoor recreational lifestyle. It has so many of the wonderful things that people come and settle on at various parts of the world for, in one place. We came back, and we knew this is exactly where we wanted to end up being. And we are really, really grateful for that opportunity and that work here. I'm not a musician. I can't consider myself one anymore. And my experience with music is limited from when I was a kid, when I'm actually playing. But I worked with the NAMM Show for a while, which is the world's largest music organization and music education advocacy group. And in that trade show we hosted, there was a decimal limit. It was 85 decimals. That is for a brief demonstration of an acoustic instrument. And so if you're trying, if you're limiting a demonstration to a higher threshold than a band is able to play at a business where they're making their livelihood, and that business itself is also making their livelihood, it's the international standard, some might say, is obviously way higher than that. And so looking at the DB is, I think, really, really important. And I'm hoping to talk more about that stuff and share resources on that from my experience with that. And living only two blocks away from downtown has been amazing. And I, at the same time as many other people, I've been able to say, the biggest sound that I hear is coming from motorcycles. It's not from music. And it's often quieter than children's laughter that I hear at the playground, at the elementary school. And these are all sounds of joy. This is not something that I'd want to change. This is stuff that would bring me more into this town and allow me to lean deeper into this community. And this is the only place I've found that's ever embodied the value in community and spirit that I was able to find living in a really intimate, eco-village community. And now I'm able to be in that similar experience, but also have business and industry and a larger community to share that with. So thank you all for what you've done, allowing me and my wife to come into this town and speak today. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Gonna go for it.
Hi, my name is Kathy Christensen, 725 Fourth Avenue. I've been in Lyons for 24 years. One of the reasons that I came was for the music. The other was that the community really takes care of each other, and the neighbors really look out for each other. And I'm really excited to hear that we're gonna find some solutions to mitigate the effect of the noise on the close neighborhood to the live music venues. And I'm really excited to think that, as neighbors, we can all get along and find a solution. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Karen Gregg, 159 Stone Canyon Drive. I happen to be the director of bands at the Mills Senior High School. In addition to that, I'm a professional classical musician. And I want to speak not to the music that we're hearing from Oscar Blues and Main Stage, because there's been a lot of people who have spoken beautifully about that, but the impact that this might have on our wedding venues and the people who are coming here to get married and who are choosing to have music be a very part of an important ceremony. A string quartet unamplified plays at a maximum of 90 decibels. I think that's important to note, that a string quartet plays at 90 decibels. I've spent my entire life sitting in orchestras in front of trumpets and trombones without hearing protection. I'm happy to say that at the age of 50, my hearing is perfect. And that speaks to what we're discussing here, and I think a lot of what people are arguing about isn't necessarily what we're hearing from Main Stage, but what we're hearing potentially from wedding venues. And that's a very different kind of music. It can be a very different kind of music. But I think that another speaker brought up the importance of understanding what decibel levels are. And that if we're bringing in not necessarily a rock band with 20 trumpets, but considering the kind of music that might be played at a wedding.
You can reclaim your...
That right there was probably 90. Anyway, I just wanted to put that out. There's someone who is speaking from a different perspective than what we've been hearing from the other musicians. I'm a classical musician, and I can tell you that the decibel levels being proposed are not even adequate for string players without amplification.
Thank you very much. Okay, who else? My side.
Well, hopefully, almost through the home stretch here. I, 1804 Tyler Avenue in Longmont, but I'm here on behalf of Planet Bluegrass, and I pretty much live here at Planet Bluegrass. You know, I wanted just to take a second at the end here and reflect a little bit. As someone who manages one of the venues in town, this is a scary conversation to have. It's a hard conversation to have. And I felt so good tonight, hearing everybody out here in support of all the music venues and speaking about how special this town is and what that means to them. And I think I can safely speak for all of the businesses that could be affected by this, that we're so grateful for the town coming out to support us and everyone kind of sharing how important this is to them. And so I want to take us back a little bit to the survey that was sent out. And I think that spoke very clearly when we saw that, I think it was almost 70% of respondents to that survey said that the noise is not a problem. And of those that did respond and say that there was problems, music wasn't even in the top two problems. And so I think that combined with what we've heard tonight really makes me feel like there is not a desire for really stringent regulation of what makes our town so special. And so I would encourage you to think about that as you, you know, deliberate about this, that I really don't think that there's the drive here for strict regulations on something that is the soul of our town. And, you know, we've gone through a really intense process through all of the, you know, working for how Planet Bluegrass should operate. And we're just one venue, and that was a very time-consuming and expensive process for all of us to go through. And I was glad to see it, you know, recognized in this draft and, you know, for us to be able to be exempted from a lot of these rules. But I look at so many of these venues, and I ask you to pay attention to the margins here. And for everyone, you know, 9:00 to 10:00 PM is thousands of dollars for Main Stage. And, you know, a wedding being able to go till 10:00 PM on a Thursday versus a Friday could be thousands of dollars to any one of us. And so those little details, that 10-decibel difference that means a, you know, a band can keep the people dancing, that can be a thousand-dollar difference to any one of us on a night here. So even though it's hard to kind of quantify a lot of these numbers and decimal limits that have been thrown around, I think it's important to think about the effect that it can have on all businesses here. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate everybody being here.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, anyone else? Going once? Okay.
My name's Cody Bennett. I live on 219 and a half Fifth Avenue. I work for Planet Bluegrass and Oscar Blues. And I've definitely dealt with many of this sound issues and things being too loud. And one of the questions that I've had about this proposal is how do you capture that and quantify it? And where it's from? Initially, from what I saw, there was something that said 25 feet in front of the sound source, which is very hard to judge what's coming off of whatever property it is as to what other people are hearing. So at some point, maybe like to see a little bit of discussion about whether you're capturing the noise from the person's backyard, from the street in front of the venue, or, and how it's done and who's doing it. 65 decibels is really low. I'm probably talking louder than 65 decibels right now. So maybe a little bit of adjustment in that. But 25 feet in front of a speaker at a lodge, you'll have 70 to 80 dB of crowd noise alone, like, from that. So maybe from the street, you could capture something or from someone's property, like figuring out a way to just quantify how it's going to be captured. And I guess the regulations around that would be something I would be interested in having more conversations about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now last call for real. One more. All right. Make it quick.
I'm Teresa Pennington. I live at 523 Second Avenue, which is right behind Mojo and Smoking Days. And I just want to bring up the point that the way I'm reading the ordinance now, it seems very disparaging against Arv and our restaurants and bars that just simply have music on the weekends and strongly favors everybody else who makes noise, being Planet Bluegrass, which I love, by the way. I'm not against them. And also our schools, right? So and the reason I wanted to stand up here is specifically because from where I live, I don't hear any of the music at the outside bars. And you would think, okay, well, why would you, right? You're many, many blocks away. You're across town from Main Stage. But you know what I do actually hear? I actually hear Planet Bluegrass when they have festivals. That actually reverberates off the cliffs, and I can hear that music pretty clearly, believe it or not, from Second Avenue, way by Mojo. I also hear when there are games at the school. I hear all the announcements for those games. So I just want the board, and as we look at decimal levels and property lines, and which businesses or venues are being favored or not favored with the way that this ordinance is written, that we're considering all of that, not just the properties next to these venues, but also properties across town that are still affected by venues who are not impacted by this ordinance, right? So I do like the point that somebody made earlier about being fair across all of the venues which make noise throughout our community. So I just wanted to make that point. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Last chance. Okay, we're done. Thank you to the 27 of you, trustee Vachi, who spoke to us. I'm gonna take a point of privilege. I'm gonna make my comments first, then we're gonna go around this way. First, I want to express my deep, deep appreciation for the folks who came out tonight and spoke. And for all of the nearly 100 emails that I personally got, other trustees maybe got more or less. And I want you to know that I read every email. I was not able to respond to every email, but I read every email. So I want to make a couple of general comments, and then I'm sure my colleagues will add to these. The first comment I want to make is that nobody wants to kill the music in Lyons. Nobody wants to kill the music in Lyons. We want our businesses to be thriving. We want our community to be thriving. That is why we sit here every two weeks for hours and hours. And the same is true of staff. We all want the community to thrive. One of the reasons this came up, in fact, and trustee Brown, you might speak more to this, is that the current ordinance says that music, that sound has to be reasonable level, 25 feet from the source, but does not quantify that, which would mean that a future board, if they decided to, could ask for that to be enforced, which would shut down the music. So that is not what we want to do. That is not our point here. We want to work with the businesses, with the venues, with the community to find something that works for everybody. The other thing I want to bring up is what was in the workshop packet hosted by staff was not even a draft ordinance. It was sort of like an input document. And I apologize if this was not made clear. And I regret that people became so concerned about it and upset about it. It's really just the starting point of somebody has to put something down on paper for us to start reacting to and for the community to start reacting to. So if you notice in the packet in the document, there are areas highlighted in yellow that actually ask for board input. And there's placeholder text here. But that is not, that was not the direction of the board, that the placeholder text, the details about that. So it's a draft that staff puts together for us so that we have something to react to. So we have something to start talking about. I'm gonna stop there because I know that my colleagues have a lot to say too, and Steph, I'm sure has stuff to say. So, Mary Christian.
I love that all of you are here, and I love how you feel about this. And I just said, this is like my only chance ever to say this. I was 17 years old in a bluegrass disc jockey at a radio station, and two 13-year-olds used to come up and record at the station. 13-year-old Ricky Skaggs and a 13-year-old Keith Whitley. Now that tells you how old I am. J.D. Crowe in the New South used to come and play every Saturday while I was on. Bill Monroe was through town. This is Eastern Kentucky. I love this town. I love the sound. We gotta figure out what the DB is, and we've gotta figure out where we measure it from. I think 65 is too low. I said that in our workshop. I'm thinking the number is 75, 80. I don't know, but it's definitely not 65. And I think that personally, I'm speaking personally, I think the fines that are listed are not realistic. But I think we do need to have a way to deal with really bad eggs who, you know, exist. And so we'll figure this out, and we'll figure it out with your help. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes, I want to do a few things just fairly quickly, and I'll have more detail to say about them later during more discussion. But I really want to make sure that everybody understands what the current rule is, because a lot of questions have been raised about why are you fooling with this? Why bring this up? But the status quo state is as it is. The rule in Lyons right now is that unreasonable noise is not allowed, noise including music. And amplified sound audible 25 feet from the source of the sound is deemed a prima facie unreasonable. That's the rule. If you can hear amplified sound 25 feet from the speaker, it's deemed unreasonable. That's a ridiculous rule. That rule came up for discussion years ago as to venues that are no longer even in existence. Diner Bar was one, Stone Coke was one. Everybody at the time realized on the board that I was on back then, that rule really doesn't work in the real world. It needs to be changed, but it's never been changed. Why? Because it's too mighty difficult to balance all the technicalities of noise ordinance, decimal levels and days and time limits and that type of thing. It's a difficult thing to do. Now we're at the point where we're gonna tackle that. It's taken seven years to get there. But please understand that the existing rule doesn't work. And put yourself in the position of a town staffer or a sheriff's deputy, three years on the boards, it happens to be assigned to Lyons, and I hit the call and says, "I live 200 feet from the music venue, and I can hear the sound, and there's an ordinance that says that's being unreasonable and violates..." two-hundred feet from the music venue, and I can hear the sound. And there's an ordinance that says that's being unreasonable and violates the, it violates the ordinance. Would you please go enforce the ordinance? What do you do? You say, well, everybody kind of knows that rule doesn't really work very well. No, you're required to enforce an ordinance. And it's happened, not as much as one might expect. Like it's happened that sheriff's deputies, and it happened once recently, and then you say, you guys turn the music down. People twenty-five feet away can hear. We need to fix that rule. How we fix it? Many details still, still to be discussed. Also realize that our existing noise ordinance does not put a day or time limits on how late music can go. If there's nobody happens to be around to enforce an ordinance, and somebody wants to play till two-thirty in the morning, nothing in this ordinance says they can't do that. And there are people in this town who would like to go to sleep at reasonable hours, and they have kids. You could go to sleep at reasonable hours. And I don't think it's unreasonable to put some on a day and time restrictions on how outdoor amplified music can be played, how they do that. We probably will not all agree on what those could be, but they're missing from the ordinance now. So it needs to be fixed in that perspective also. And as to some of the other details, and I want to thank, like I know, as the other coordinators have said, the thought, the level of input, the number of emails we've gotten on this is the most we've had since we, the top forgot the hotel, maybe more than that. And there've been some very good ideas and clean all those. A lot of people have pointed out that there are things that need to be changed in the permitting process and the neighborhood policy, how all those things will work. This was, as Mary Rogan said, a first draft, but put it out there and see and discuss these things. Some of those things need fixing, and I think that we will work hard to fix them.
Trustee Donovan?
Just want to say thank you all for being involved, and your participation speaks volumes.
Trustee Hammer.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold my comments till we get into the deliberation later. But I will say though, and thank, thank you, everybody that showed up. This really hit a hot button. We heard you loud and clear. I will say I'm disappointed in our process. It seemed like this draft ordinance and some of the, it really struck a nerve with everybody. And like was explained earlier, this is really a point to start discussion. For some of you that may have listened in to the workshop, my guess is the board's much more lenient than what this draft ordinance is. Whether, who knows what we agree on the decibels, but I just think we kind of shot ourselves in the foot with this, is my personal opinion. So but thank you for taking the time out and making yourself heard.
Thank you. Trustee Vati?
Yes, I have some notes. Bear with me. First, I want to say thank you all for showing up and just showing how passionately you feel about this town. It's, it feels, I heard somebody speak from the heart, and that just spoke straight to my heart. And just to know that we all love our community so much. And I love how many people remind us that music is the soul of this community. It's what it was built, built upon. You know, I also believe in strong partnerships, especially in a small town like Lyons, the local businesses. We obviously, as a town, depend on businesses for the sales tax revenue, for our budget. So we get that. I love, I love how you reminded everybody that nobody wants to kill music in this town. We are here because we want the community to survive. And music is not a nuisance. It's the soul of Lyons. And I love tonight, this is the first time I've heard this, I never realized that people considered music as their third living room. I think we need to market that somehow. I had never heard it referred to as the third living room. I love that idea. So thank you for showing up and proving that democracy still works. Thank you for showing how passionate you are about your community and music in general. I love this town. I really do.
Thank you. Trustee Lo?
One of the, one of the tenants of this board should be to listen to the people. Standing here in the audience here tonight, the seventy-plus emails that we get with, we need, we need to listen to you folks. And as Mary Rogan pointed out, this isn't all about the music. You know, this ordinance also covers things like cars, loud cars, electric, electric tools, house parties that go on till three AM in the morning. All of these have to be covered in that unreasonable noise ordinance. You know, the survey that was done, I think it was last summer, showed that, to answer Zach's question, it was eighty-one percent of the respondents said, we don't care about enforcing the noise ordinance. There are some people in town for whom the noise ordinance is very important. People who live in close proximity to the music venues, perhaps have a medical condition, perhaps have to get up the next morning to go to work, perhaps work second shift, and they're trying to get some sleep. So we have to consider those people as well. The and as trustee Brownie pointed out, the current ordinance that we have needs some clarification. It needs to be enforceable. We need to put some meat on the bones and not just have some sort of vague idea about what constitutes unreasonable noise. So please know that we will be attentive to all of your concerns, and we're gonna figure this out.
Very much. Administrator Simonson, would you?
Um, no, I feel the same as everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and supporting our community as a whole. I really don't, I think you guys have addressed everything so far, but we wasted more time.
Thank you, everybody.
We do have just one thing.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of things. Loved hearing all the public comments. I think it was great to hear from the residents about what makes Lyons special to you all. Just in terms of thinking about timing of an ordinance or trial run, I think any direction from the board during whatever type of analysis we'd like to do over the coming weeks would be really helpful. And also just thinking about effective date and time to draft an ordinance. I don't know that we would have an ordinance in place that would apply to this summer's activities just to, as I was thinking for the timeline, given that we're already into June.
Just for folks who don't understand, that's, appreciate that. But this is Lisa Ritchie, our planner, for those of you who don't know her. So, great. Okay, so that concludes audience business and follow-up. It sounds like it's starting to really pour out there. I don't, I don't know whether that's.
We're supposed to get an inch of rain overnight.
We're supposed to get an inch of rain overnight. So we should get somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can watch our discussions at townoflyons.com/livestream. So the meeting will be going all night. I anticipate we'll get to it maybe in an hour, forty-five minutes or so. Great. Let's, let's move on to staff reports.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
All folks are.
Sergeant Chris, thank you so much for being with us.
Absolutely. I will say, I think I'm getting fluffless because in my prior tenure here, I left on a noise organization. On a noise organization issue, so maybe I'm the problem. Throw that out there, but anyways, a couple of things. I'll keep it short and quick. A couple of weeks ago, we attended the parks meeting, met up with the security staff. We have posted all the extra duty for the summer as, as the months go on. So we're getting a lot more foot patrol in parks on the big weekends, a lot more traffic enforcement during the weekends and the weekdays. So that stuff's coming around. We're doing good in that area. The security staff was, I was very impressed with them, meaning the people they run in parks. They seem like they were some quality folks. So I'm very happy to, to be working in partnership with those folks. They get along really good with our deputies, and we seem to have really good kind of flow chart chain of when to call, when not to call, when it gets serious, and what's getting handled in parks by the posts, and then the security, and then ultimately sheriff's office. So I think that's gonna be a really good communication relationship for the second year. I think this is the second year you've had this particular security. So that is all good. Getting into the kind of the thick of summer event planning, where I know we've got some bike races coming through, and the, the general summer festivals and stuff are all happening up. One thing that, speaking of the rain stuff, just so you guys all know, I keep close eye on the, the CFS levels and that, creates stuff like that, as does the EOC and the county overall. Right now, we're running around three-hundred-and-eighty, which is still pretty low. I think the runoff is a little bit lackadaisical this year. I think it's coming at a steady pace, and we're not gonna see a bit, you know, rise. Knock on wood with that. I know Boulder Creeks have one, one oh eight, and then the whole tubing ban thing comes into play. So that could come up sooner than later, but we'll be ahead of that. All of my deputies are trained for swift water rescue. We have all the stations getting refilled, replenished with that. And I'll be tying them with the fire department when they have their swift water rescue as well, so that we're all in tune and working together with what hopefully never happened up here. But other than that, everything in town, folks?
Thank you very much. Questions? Yes, trustee Lo.
Speaking of noise, what, what are you able to enforce on the state roads for excessive noise? Saturday, it sounded like they were filming Fast and Furious on thirty-six. In addition to the motorcycles.
It, you, it is extremely difficult. As trustee Brownie pointed out, just with the noise ordinance in town, ambiguous words, things like that, that are not specific, make it nearly impossible. The closest that we can really come is in modified systems on vehicles. So Harley-Davidsons with straight pipes, things like that, that are not technically allowed on the road. So like, I'm a race car driver in a villa or so, and an open header Camaro going down Main Street would upset a lot of people, right? Harley-Davidsons are a close second. So the, the short answer is very minimal. It's hard to a hundred percent identify catch and basically identify what's going on pulling over a pack of motorcycles is impossible.
So by the time you get a complaint, they're long gone, they're long gone.
Especially up here.
But if you're on a traffic patrol, you have no ability to enforce that. If you're sitting by the side of the road, like at the November Hall and.
Correct. A lot of those problems become a secondary offense, almost like a seatbelt violation. Okay. So it's, I can't attack that. I gotta find something else and then attack it all.
Gotcha.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's difficult. I, partnership with Sergeant Mike Hill with State Patrol, he's up in the Boulder District. He's my State Patrol cadre, and we talk a lot about this type of stuff in the street racers and the loud cars that come through. They do have a task force out for a lot of the illegal street racing, the loud cars and stuff like that. However, the task force the State Patrol has is only a group of about five or six troopers, but they also do the front range. So they're very specific, and there are other areas that are much more problematic. We have a serious problem in the highway thirty-six corridor coming in the Boulder through the town of Superior, where they can get upwards of three-hundred-and-fifty very loud cars all night long. So we're very lucky up here. I'm not saying it's not enforceable, but it's, it's difficult at best. And being here and seeing it happen, and I've been even saying in substation, I can hear it. By the time I get in my car and jump out, I can't identify who's doing it. The problems that we generally have is like a normal speeding issue in a, in a lower neighborhood. As soon as I set up a car out there, one of the bases is feeling a lot of, okay, great. As soon as I leave, you know, an hour later, we're racing down the street. So it's like shoveling water with a pitchfork. It's hard to enforce. We do our best. We are few, they are many. Definitely not making excuses, but my guys are out there hitting it as hard as they can and trying to do the best, best work that they can. So and I'll definitely pass it on to you. I know noise is a sensitive issue up here, and I, I do sympathize with, you know, the music is not a hundred percent the issue. It's, you know, the jake brakes and the, you know, those things that come through town day in and day out. So we'll do our best, and we can put that higher up on our, on our radar and see if we can get some kind of reinforcement.
Any other?
Yeah, it's my understanding that maybe last year, all of last year, there were twenty-four complaints about noise. Do you know how many there have been this year so far?
I don't. I apologize to the board as well. The stat program that Cody left me with, it's just, it's complicated. I'm having a hard time getting to it. We're getting allowed to be into it. And that computer tech is not my savvy, but I've got some people working, so I can get in there and access it to bring that information. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, I can even back at the next board meeting or following with a follow-up or stuff like that because I know that's important information as well. It, it's funny when you bring that kind of stuff up too, because a lot of times it's, a complaint can generate a lot of buzz, you know, one complaint, one person, right? As we see, which doesn't mean that it doesn't exist, but it creates a buzz to make it sound a lot bigger than it is. If you're talking last year, only twenty-some complaints, that's pretty minor compared to a lot of things that just go on in the county normal. So again, sometimes consider ourselves up here pretty lucky that we don't have more of it. But this, the data will show that, and I can give them.
Well, as a follow-up, I feel like you've been here for a few years prior to this year. So based on your prior experience, do you feel like noise was a common complaint?
Well. Which was a very unique situation, and that was purely music and purely just a disregard for any rules and policies that were in place, to be quite honest with you. It generated a lot of discontent throughout the town because we got a lot of what I'll call sub complaints, where everybody just got so darn sensitive to the music that we responded down in the Confluence area on a, on a gentleman that played, produced a guitar outside. And there was a neighbor that just could not handle it. And you want to talk, the, the decimal thing is, is very true. It is extremely hard again to enforce that. This, the ordinance we have now is, as pointed out, absolutely ridiculous because who could not hear amplified sound within twenty-five feet? And that, that falls on our shoulders. So we're out there on the front lines trying to explain to somebody, you know, if this is, it, it's not, just because it's written, doesn't mean it should be enforced to a level where an ordinance like that is not written well. So we do a lot of dancing around and try to solve the problem, which is what I've talked about a lot up here with coming up here and not running this town as a dictatorship and a, and a rule, policy, ordinance-driven place. But if there's a problem, let's work together and solve it. The line's dead. Unfortunately, it was solved, but we all know how. So it's complicated, and you guys have a lot. And if, if there's anything I can do on my side to bring to the table on workshops, please let me know. I can bring in some data or some, some stuff from other smaller communities and things that go on in the county that we deal with as well. That's pretty much mirrors this stuff. So you have to do that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
And you may not know about this, but there are a couple of the many emails that we got that reference that, as I read it, some recent incident where somebody made a complaint about a venue and a sheriff's officer visited the venue and turned down the music. I, I never heard about it, but there were a couple of emails. Do you know anything about that?
I don't. It was kind of a surprise to me because as part of the chief up here, I have all the guys that respond up here, things like that. We have a system that I can keep track because as you guys know, I'm doing kind of the county and the Lyons at the same time. But I'm trying to really focus hard on Lyons and make that their priority. But I did not hear anything specific like that, and usually I will get a call because that is a very unique thing. And I've let all the crew up here know that when that stuff comes around and you got a question, my phone never shuts off. So the night shift guys will call me, but I did not hear about this, and I will inquire.
And I don't know if they mentioned it in a couple of emails, but nobody gave the exact, anything say what idiot it was or what kind of work it was today. So.
Yeah, and I'll just tag on to that one little bit too, because I have learned in twenty-four or twenty-five years of doing this job that until I hear from all the sources, it is so difficult to make it an assessment or a judgment call on anything because you're hearing one side of the story. So, you know, it's, there's the facts, so.
Thank you so much. You must be exhausted.
It's been a couple of days. Yesterday was absolutely terrible. My crew was down on that call. So it's been, it's been a long day yesterday, a long night last night, a long day today with this stuff going on at the jail and things like that. So I will, I will, I will exit and leave you guys to the rest of the board, if that's good.
Thank you. We really appreciate you being here, Sergeant Chris.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
And um, and our hearts go out to you and your colleagues and.
It's a rough one.
It's rough and we wish you all the peace and safety.
Thank you very much. All right, you guys have a fantastic night and.
Thank you.
Reach out if you, if I can do anything else with the.
You have to sleep before we.
Before the rain hits and everything else happens. Have a good night, folks. Thank you.
Okay, administrators report please.
Thank you. The uh, I don't think I need to go into a lot of detail unless you have questions about anything in our report. But I do have three items in my report that needed some word support or not. Um, one of them had to do with the North Foothills Bike Way Grants. If you recall, um, at your last meeting, you approved a letter of support for C dot to add the North Foothills Bike Way to their ten year plan. Now, this request is to support Boulder County's grants um, for funding for that project. So we are looking for whether or not we can um, prepare a letter of support um, for Boulder County's grant.
Rusty Hammer?
Um, we also have a request from the Sustainable Futures Commission for a letter of support from the Board of Trustees to work with Colorado Circular Communities called C three to um, develop a comprehensive community-wide composting plan.
I have a question about that. Does that require any commitment on our part financially?
Uh, let me see. Do you know that answer? It does not. It does not require any local commitment.
What about staff time?
Uh, probably some staff time working with the SFC. But.
Minimal, like attending update meetings. But they have a project, essentially a full consultant project manager.
That will be ready.
Mostly on them and they're in C D P H E.
Yeah, quick question. So it looks like this composting facility would be co-sited with the recycle bots.
Not necessarily. Will it be co-housed with recycling?
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
I think those, they would give recommendations on.
No, it would just be a, it would be a plan developed by C D P H E for, for like compost, organic waste, branches, leaves, all of that. Where does it go and how we could move forward with that? Um, and this came out of, we had five thousand dollars um, a grant to work on composting. So that's kind of how this all started. We met with their team and then it kind of um, went, went further. So.
But it just says here, community compost drop off to a recycling center.
That's, I think. Okay, yes. I think as such as is what, yeah.
So I guess, I guess my only question is with the, and I don't have any problem with this. I think this is a wonderful idea. But I'm just curious, when we talk about staff time and whatnot, I mean, we, we have some staff time that goes into the current recycling center, right? Especially when people throw them off all day.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit there and then um, with uh cleanup of, like in the winter, we have to clear the steps. So things from a liability perspective.
All right, so are we good with that?
Question. I wonder, imagine you already asked it, which is kind of requiring financial commitment. Secondly, any composting plan that would be proposed to Lions would come to this board. A lot of communities have struggled. Some have tried it and dropped it and everything, and I once signed everybody that, that late and not lamented, single power trash proposal. And Lions originated with how to get composting done down line. And so it's a difficult problem and that's why I want to make sure that any proposed solution comes to this board.
Of course, of course. Yeah, and then the third request um, came today. And this again, just kind of reiterates how last minute these requests are. Um, and oftentimes there's deadlines. Um, the last request um, is a tag along to our last meeting as well. If you recall, you gave staff permission to apply for the Safe Streets for All Grant for the thirty six and Highway seven corridor. And it was for uh, safety and intersection improvements along corridor, um, Highway seven, all the way up to Eagle Canyon. Um, so we submitted our initial letter of interest, because this would be submitted through Dr. Cobb. This is a new SS four A grant. Um, we were, we put in that those improvements would cost two point five million. We have heard back from Dr. Cobb today. They are very interested in submitting that on our behalf as part of theirs. There would be a twenty percent match and Dola today said we could submit all twenty percent to them through the local match for small communities.
So great.
So this would, this would add um, sidewalks out to Eagle Canyon. It would improve all the intersections through town um, along that corridor and bump outs where they're needed. Signs where they're needed. This was a, a, it's pretty big. This is a large grant for the town. And this makes me think, and, and so what we need is they are asking for a letter of support from our highest ranking official to um, move forward with not only our letter of intent, but being involved with the grant.
I've just, I've stated before and I'll state it again on the record, I am not in favor of having a wide concrete sidewalk or multi-modal path between downtown and Eagle Pond. I do not think that because of inefficient use of town resources.
Okay, Brad, what are you going to say?
Yes, I'm in favor of safer community.
All right, thank you. Um, and then I did receive a phone call late today from Senator Bennett's office. He is choosing to move forward our congressionally directed spending request for three point eight million dollars for our Way Starter treatment. So um, he is, he is, he is submitting that as one of his projects for his district. The next steps are that it goes to the C D S committee in August. And then um, if it's in move forward by that committee, it goes in front as a bill for Congress to approve in November. So this would be three point eight million dollars for our needed wastewater improvements if it moves forward. I did have a discussion, you know, that knowing that things are um, still moving. And they said, Senator Bennett's office said, we've, we still feel that the congressionally directed spending is going to move forward. Um, they said that it would have been killed by now, they thought, if not. So um, that was a late discussion. And what both of the last two items bring up to me is, I hear from our public how much they want us to look for funding for downtown businesses and the arts. And the staff, I think, as the board knows, we go, we, we bring forward all sorts of grants. Um, they're just aren't as prevalent for um, the arts as they are for infrastructure. Usually, and not in the, the same amounts that we're talking about millions of dollars. But we are always out looking for funding for facilities or economic development as well. So um. Any other questions on my report? Otherwise I won't take more of your time. I know there were very important things about the mud sale and curbside pickup and the open house coming up. Um, anything you want me to touch upon, Rusty Low?
One sixty East Main Street.
Yes.
Any change in status from your report?
Uh, no, that was just late last week. He came in and returned all of his tickets. Said he was not going to pay those.
So these accumulate at one fifty a day per violation?
Yes, thank you. No, it's a one time. His next, his next defense will be to, to appear before the municipal judge in July. So he will appear, well, I don't know if he'll appear.
Is a court date July seventeenth, put it that way?
And the fine that has been done so far is?
Two seventy five dollar fines and two one hundred and fifty dollar fines.
It's not per day, it's each side dish. Oh, okay.
Because he has so many days to then take care of it. And then the next step is appearance in municipal court.
One, one quick question on the congressionally directed spending, as I understand it, what Senator Bennett's office has said that that congressional directive spending, including what he's, thank, thank you very much, including from Lions, would move separately from the pending budget bill that's in the Senate right now that's generating all the national.
Yes.
That you think is very strangely a question.
So they want to keep their projects that they want to support in each of their districts.
I've, because it hasn't been killed, I would infer from that 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 must have some bipartisan support.
I'm sure it does. So um, they, they, you know, we, we have been through this step once before and it didn't make it past. But to have it um, submitted again, they did have some questions about, didn't you just build a facility? You know, less than ten years. So I had to go through all that with them, but um, it's still move, they are going to move it forward.
Because we're, we're getting ready to issue a request for proposals on the.
That's out. We should have, it was out of bed by July sixteen.
And I, he did, I told him it was out for bid and our numbers may change. You know, we'll have more up to date numbers. And so he said, let me know whether those go up or down. So that if there's additional funding available to use elsewhere, we know, or if you need more, we'll change your number. But he said to let him know because no other action would probably happen until August.
Any other questions for Administrator Simonson?
I would just want to offer up Cassidy, thank you for your service here and best wishes on your new endeavor.
Rusty, that's you.
Yes, I also want to thank you for your service. And I wanted to follow up. Um, I think you may have exchanged earlier regarding signage um, for the prohibition of open carrying of firearms. So I know they have been ordered um, for town hall and the parks, is that right? And so do we have any idea when they will be posted?
Um, as soon as they arrive. Um, Dave is um, on vacation right now. So maybe they'll be here by the time he gets back and you can get those up.
So maybe next week or the week after. Do we know when he gets back?
Next week.
Okay, yeah. Um, there's one other thing I should have just mentioned since I don't think Cassie's on here.
Um, the sales tax report, as you saw, remains very strong.
Cassie is on.
Oh, she is? Do you want to give, I'll let you do it since you're here.
Okay, sounds good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, sales tax is very strong, as Administrator Simonson mentioned. Uh, we are about ten percent over um, from our March sales of last year. And um, year to date about uh, eight point five percent. A lot of this is attributable to online sales, uh, deliveries and streaming services. Um, the streaming services is actually something that we've seen a spike in over um, the last probably six months. And I did reach out to the Department of Revenue and um, they have uh, hit them pretty hard with compliance, I'm guessing nationwide, um, where this is applicable. But for any kind of movie rentals, all the streaming services, all of those are taxable. And so we have seen a pretty big increase in those, um, which uh, does definitely explain some of our increase in sales tax revenue. Um, additionally, we're seeing a lot of what seems like maybe interior design renovation type um, online sales tax from, you know, higher end um, retailers. Um, so that definitely makes a difference as well. Um, so we'll continue to watch that and see if it, you know, goes into the future. Um, of course, budget time's coming up, so we'll look into being conservative as always. Uh, the state is not seeing the same type of um, increases that we are. Uh, so we should look at ourselves as fortunate for that. Um. And then the marijuana sales tax revenue is in there for local as well, just as an FYI, we do track that still. And then um, if you wanted to take a look at the local business versus the non-local business, you'll see that we, our local business is attributed about forty seven percent to our sales tax revenue, which um, is lower than usual. Um, we'll see it go higher in the summer months with festivals and things. But I think that just goes to show the, the online sales and delivery's strength um, in the community. Um, we also uh, still um, have not received the sales tax from the one business that is over three months um, delinquent. So uh, that's progressing. Um, I, I do believe there was a court summons issued for a uh, non-business license.
July seventeenth as well will be adhering for not having a business license.
Yeah, so that will be a, a piece that will, will move forward into this puzzle as well. Um, and that's all. Open up for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Director Ryston?
Right, um, I have a question.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I want to say that um, congratulations on, to all of us on the three point eight million dollars that CBS getting this for. Um, I, it's a, it was an enormous effort by staff and quite honestly, by me to do the advocacy. So if we wind up getting that, I'm going to be. We're partying for Senator Bennett at the wastewater tree.
No, seriously, I mean.
Um, but seriously, being able to um, advocate for our small community is a real honor. And I am so thrilled that Senator Bennett's office and, and the senator realizes how important this is to us. It's huge. So thank you, staff. Um, and then I have one question about one thing in your report. And that is the um, the fire hydrant at the top of the Seward Stigmeat Loop. Um, I saw had an illegal connection to an irrigation system. And I would like to know more about that and I would like to know more about what it would take to disconnect that and um, stop the water leakage or theft or whatever is happening there.
Yeah, that would be considered.
It is shut off and disconnected.
The, the whole hydrant or just the?
The, the tap that was there. So there was a natural tap like you would do on a standard water line, which has a, called a corp stop. They have to turn it off. So they turn it off, cut it, and it is disconnected from that line. They are, and then rebarried. Um, the line itself then is just something, again, it was more the black irrigation type pipe. We didn't go too much further than the actual hole that was dug there. And again, in town, I've seen some crazy things on Second Avenue. There was a line that, a service line that went, made a complete U. You would have thought it was going east and then it U'd around that way, but it was a line that went to the north, which would be going towards the hill that is Long's Peak as you go up. Or there's a corner of that property, you know that we just took that strip of property, that we just had the property next to that is what it heads towards. But it had to have been done before that was paved or any recent pavement, because there was not any type of patch job that we could see when we first dug it. So a long time ago, somebody did put in this tap. I did talk to the neighbors on both sides to make sure we weren't turning off their water when this was shut off. And nobody knew anything about it.
Um, okay, so you just turned off the valve or did you disconnect the pipe?
The little pipe was, it was leaking there and I thought they'd even disconnected the pipe. Would want to go back in, we could dig it up. We talked about it afterwards and actually put in an actual cap.
Yeah.
A screw in cap, but we didn't have it and didn't want to leave the hole open. But again, someone would have to dig it up to actually open up that valve.
Okay.
And hopefully we get it paved and then we really know.
We can see if somebody digs it up. Because yeah, if, if they're determined, they'll just dig the hole back out and open the valve. It's hard to, hard to hide that.
Yes.
So um. Yeah, once it's paved. Thank you. Appreciate your work on that. Um, okay, uh, let's move on then to the legal updates.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rogan. Um, I was primarily going to talk about one sixty Main Street. Some of my thunder has already been stolen about the um, the court date that's approaching on July seventeenth. But I was also been asked a question I want to address publicly about, you know, what is the difference between the mural? But I was also been asked a question I want to address publicly about, you know, what is the difference between the mural on the town, you know, Hall versus what is at that property? And you know, the short answer is, is that, you know, the town's mural was a permitted piece done, you know, through the Lyons Arts and Humanities Commission. Whatever we want to call it, you know, the, the markings on the business is not permitted. And all signs, which would include these according to our definition of a sign, you know, requires a permit. So it's an unpermitted use of that properties, which is why it's different from any other mural that is in town, which the rest of those have all been permitted. And so I just want to answer that, that simple question for, for the board, as I have been getting it recently.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Attorney Dittman?
No, but I appreciate the clarification between what is a mural and what is signage or graffiti.
Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you. All right, so it is now exactly nine o'clock, which is when we take our normal break. So let's do that. Let's take a 10 minute or so break, come back and then talk about whether there's anything we want to amend on the agenda for this evening. Knowing that we do our second readings.
Those have been posted.
Those have been posted, so we need to do those. All right, so 10 minutes or so? Yes. Everybody, so let's get down again. Before we go into ordinance and public hearings, let's talk about whether we want to shift the agenda at all. Victoria, do you think there's anything that we can reasonably delay?
We talked about if you'd like to, we can wait on the comp plan review results if you would like to. Also, the EBC input, if you would like to do so with that on the business recovery funds. And was there one more?
I'll just look in the work session discussion.
Oh. The, which one?
Sorry, the work session, the session.
The work session discussion on.
Oh. Those I think were the only, yeah.
Okay, so. Really not a lot else, unless something would come off of consent, then I would probably wait.
Are we, are we okay with waiting on the comp plan review results and the BRF discussion?
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hunt those.
We would like to get pavement moving.
Yep, got it. All right, so let's move on to ordinances and public hearings. I'm having flashbacks in 2021. So first up, the second reading on public hearing of ordinance 1192 in ordinance of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, amending chapter 16, article 10 of the LMC concerning ADUs.
Good evening, everybody. Town planer Lisa Ritchie. I have no presentation for you tonight. I'm going to trust you read your packet. I'm happy to go through things or I'm just happy to take questions, whichever you prefer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff tonight? Okay, then I will open the public hearing. Anybody in the room? No? I will close the public hearing and adjourn the motion.
Go ahead.
I'm going to approve ordinance 1192 and ordinance of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, amending chapter 16 for 10 on license and for concerning accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this tonight?
For anybody not familiar with this, we've been through this a number of times and particular issues that have been in the past resolved in one by one. And this, this reading basically incorporates things that we have talked about in some detail in prior meetings.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Yep. All right, second reading, public hearing of ordinance 1193 in ordinance of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, amending chapter 18, article 3 of the LMC to make specific amendments related to the International Presidential Code 2021 Edition and accessory dwelling units.
Same thing again. This is a really short ordinance, amending building code items. Have any questions unless you'd like me to discuss it further?
Any questions for the plane? I'll open the public hearing on 1193. No one here to speak, so I'll close the public hearing and adjourn your motion.
I approve for ordinance 1193, the ordinance of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, amending chapter 1893, the man I think is proposing accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Same as the last item, this has been discussed, but it don't agree, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Oh, motion passes six to one with trustee Hammer voting no.
In system.
All right, then those were the fastest second reading I've ever seen. Yeah, okay. First best case, will you please read consent into the record?
Yes. Item one is resolution 2025-36, the resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, adopting a new employee handbook applicable to employees of the Town of Lyons. Item two is resolution 2025-37, the resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving a professional services agreement with Safe Built LLC for professional building services. Item three, the May 19, 2025 Regular Board Trustees Meeting Minutes. And item four are the June accounts payable.
Thank you. Is there a motion for consent?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything anyone would like to remove today?
I'd like to remove item two.
I just have a question about one of the things on the table. Minnesota didn't want to remove it.
Go ahead.
Should I go ahead and remove it? There, there are some large dollar items in here for the same rail extension. I just wanted to get an update to make sure, are there any issues with the reimbursement process to the town now are the buildings?
There has not been any issues to date and we're almost to the end. I think last time I saw that invoice, I think they were at like 90% or they're getting very, very, very close to the end.
We're paying them and we're getting reimbursed regularly.
All right, great. Thank you. Let's vote on consent with item two.
Motion passes unanimously. Elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm just seeking some clarity on, on this contract. If you recall, on our discussion on the 2025 budget, we had, I think it was brought up that we would end up paying 90K to a building inspection contractor. There was regardless of the hours, right? Because of seeing what they can offer now, they may have had something different. But yes, we are now looking at a contract that's going to be based on just assisting with the inspection, not a fully committed inspection team that have to handle all of it.
Also, we had SafeBilt for years, twenty years, maybe twenty years. Before CA. So we're familiar with the company as well and we've always had a good relationship.
Right, great. I applaud you for taking this action. So I'm going to move to approve resolution 202537, the resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, approving a professional services agreement with SafeBilt LLC for providing professional building services.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
That motion passes unanimously.
Yep. Alright, it is my pleasure to appoint Eric Friedman to the PRC work commission. And I think is PRC then full? Yeah?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, great, okay, terrific. Um, alright, so then let's move on to our first item under general business, which is discussion direction following the noise ordinance workshop. Who would like to start us off? Where would we like to start?
Can I speak to the intent of this?
Yes.
So I really liked what I saw in an email from Juror Art in Geneva who live on Estes Court. And I quote, um, we should be looking for balanced approaches that protects community harmony without stifling our culture and economy. I thought that was so elegantly put that I kind of had it as my guiding mission through this. And also, I saw somewhere else, somebody speaks the unreasonable noise as it exists currently. And I was thinking of neighbors we've heard from an upper fifth or room filled place who feel like they should be able to carry on their normal activities, such as watching TV or having a conversation. And I feel like that's why it was so important to have the demonstration earlier during the workshop, because I felt like it was important for me to see, um, or hear rather, that I could still carry on a conversation while there was music happening in the background. And we tested that at 25 feet and we tested that probably at 50 feet, or we tested it again at about 100 feet. And I felt really comfortable actually across the street at 100 feet and I felt like that was very representative of, I guess, the closest proximity. So I feel like this distance, uh, this measurement of distance, I feel it's important. I hadn't considered that before we did that and I could see, I really loved how you took us across the street. Because when I think of the residences who are closest to some of those music venues on Main Street, they are across the street. Nobody is directly behind them. So I'm just thinking 25 feet doesn't really apply. I do feel more comfortable with the 100 feet. So anyways, I just share a lot of things I, I mean, know what's up with this draft ordinance and Bobby started somewhere. Um, but that was what I want to say because of the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
So are you suggesting 100 feet to be a?
Well, and I, I think maybe before we get into the particulars of the number of feet and the, um, any specific decibels, maybe we need to take a step back and, um, talk a little bit about what the next steps should be. You know, maybe the next step is not creating an ordinance, I don't know. Maybe the next step is continuing to work with the businesses. I don't know, what are our thoughts about that during that trial play that we discussed just a moment ago?
Yeah, I mean, as we heard, we're not going to be able to get up ordinance in this summer. So I think if we kind of frame one up and then start working through the details, uh, I think the idea of hiring a consultant would be excellent because I really do think there's a huge difference, you know, the whole discussion is about decibels and then where do you measure? And I think if we had a better idea of of the music around town and measure the 10, look at whatever they are and see what impact this, because you know, like Michael Gray said, I think every, you lose three decibels for, I forget what the fall by was. It matters where you're at, is what I'm saying. Uh, so I, I think if we hired a consultant, but we start, you know, framing this discussion up, I think we go a long way in easing the concerns we heard tonight.
I'm curious to know if staff has an opinion about where we should head next.
Well, first look at Cass, Cassidy is the one who's been working the closest with this, um, listening to all the comments tonight. Um, if you have any opinions you want to share first?
On where we could go? Yeah, I think that's hard. Um, I think everyone knows this was a draft, not meant, um, at all to be taken as something that was definite, um, which is why I left a lot of yellow highlights in there.
Yeah.
Um, some of the questions I had kind of when creating it even were just taking our current code. Um, we've talked mostly about music venues. Um, some people brought up tonight like, wait, that's not our problem. So maybe even revisiting just the main section is a place to go. Um, I tried to include business, the business letter feedback, and I know that the AD was not included, but we tried to include a variance process. We tried to include, um, uh, having the current noise agreements continue forward. Uh, and then the, the good neighbor policy, so I'm not exactly sure. Um, I think internally as staff, we talked about how do you create the good neighbor? Do you put it in the code? Is it easy to change or how kind of, um, can you write it up and create the forms? Uh, but a lot of, a lot of things in the ordinance I pulled from other municipalities. So I know, um, I know a lot of people are concerned at 65 decibels. I pulled that from Golden, but that's actually higher than other municipalities. So I think some residents could be concerned, but I think I, I guess I don't know where to start. Um, but yeah, just, just also keeping in mind whether something's measured at the property line of the, of the venue versus at a complaining property, because that property could be four blocks away. And if something's 80 decibels four blocks away, it's probably pretty loud. Um, so I'm not, I guess that's tough, but I do think we, the decimal reader that we were using tonight is the towns. Um, so that could also be a place to start is just kind of, if a, if a venue wants us to connect with us and just kind of get a sense of where they're at, um, I think that's something that we could help them with. Um, and just kind of us getting an idea at their property line and then maybe backing up with some key points in the neighborhood to, to help them out. It's important long-term that venues have an idea of how their, their sound travels, I think. Um, I think that was acknowledged by the venue owners tonight too, but, um, and it may be different at different points if they have a large property, but that's the only way that they can help their in compliance. Um, we don't want them to go, as somebody said, that they should go to the complaining resident, we don't want that. Um, but yeah, just kind of helping them out and we have that needed. So yeah, I don't know.
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's 10 sites even. And so when we're talking about hiring a consultant is great because they may have the, you know, the degree behind them or the experience, but there really are only about four sites that we hear from the neighbors.
And they would be objective. They would be providing the objective.
Well, we would have our code compliance, we would have code compliance do it since they're the ones who have to up and force this.
Well, and the other thing that was suggested, um, by Eric Keen, actually, when I spoke to him, was taking the board on a tour. Um, during a night where there's music, assuming we would like to all be together in a night where there's music to different venues in different spots around town.
Well, or, or we work with the businesses to have their music during, it doesn't have to be.
We can, maybe we can just get like.
Well, no, we could have a demonstration like you did today from each site.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to be only on a Friday or Saturday.
Yeah, so I think, um, I think that might be helpful too.
But I mean, that might be a starting point. Let's see, we'll see what kind of, what kind of levels are we talking at?
Yeah, I just, I'm hesitant to go down the, the path of talking about the details of any ordinance at this point. But I mean, I could be, you know, talked out of that or others as well. Mark, I'm curious, do you have thoughts? It steps.
It's the thing that has prevented, um, multiple boards from fixing what I believe everybody, according to sheriff's office, Sergeant testified earlier, um, from fixing what everybody realizes is a defective, ridiculous noise ordinance. What's prevented us from doing that is exactly the details of the ordinance. Everybody has known this is going to be tough finding the right decimal digits, talking about what day and time limits. How do you structure a permitting process? What do you do on enforcement costs and changes? It's, it's tough. And coming from the perspective of having started this seven years ago, we try to get more to dive into the difficult details of doing an ordinance like this and to basically have been told at least three times that I recall. Takes too much time, too hard to do, we're not ready. Seven years later to hear the same thing is frankly frustrating. And if we're going to do that, if we're going to go do studies, but all fixing the ordinance that everybody has realized for years needs to be fixed, then we need to have a serious discussion and come up with guidance for town staff and the sheriff's office and the venue owners and the residents of what we're going to do between now and then, whatever time the ordinance becomes effective. What do you do? The wedding season starts two weeks from now. And somebody who wants acoustic only music calls sheriff's office and says it violates the ordinance, please go enforce the ordinance. Or they do the same for town staff. Do we just leave it up to whatever sheriff's officer is on duty to kind of try to work something out? That to me is ducking our responsibility as a board. We're passing above town staff or, um, sheriff's office deal with an ordinance that it's our responsibility to fix. In my view, we should have fixed it years ago. You know, what would happen if we, for example, declared a moratorium on enforcement of the ordinance while we're looking at a new ordinance? I don't even know if that's possible today, Brandon. Is that an option?
You can do a temporary moratorium.
And if we do that, then we're going to be basically relying on the good faith of both this, the venue owners, um, and the residents to understand that a new ordinance is in the works. In the meantime, everybody's just going to try to have to get along. We're talking about trying to avoid conflicts between the two. But, you know, I don't believe any of our current venue owners would take advantage of a moratorium by saying, oh, I've got 90 decibels now. Uh, and there's nothing making it. But you're going to have some feedback, I'm pretty sure, and some of the residents saying, wait a minute, you just basically temporarily revealed your noise ordinance, what protection do I have? So that, that itself, just like the details of an ordinance is a difficult policy, but I think it's the board responsible to address that. I don't think we should. I think we're doing our jobs as board members to pass that responsibility on to a sheriff's deputy who may only be here occasionally or to the town staff. I think that's something we have to figure out. What do we do in the interim? Because I think leaving the existing ordinance on the books in the interim is not a good solution.
Well, I'm kind of playing.
Yeah.
Um, the existing ordinance has been on the books all these many years and we know that we get a number, a certain number of complaints every year. But our businesses have been, um, extremely reasonable and our residents have been extremely reasonable. And I don't think there's any reason to think that would change if they remain on the books as they are while we were, especially as we are working through this ordinance. Trustee, do you?
I agree with that and speaking to what you said earlier about, um, how responsible our venue owners are and, you know, wanting to strengthen that partnership with our businesses, you know, you're currently the, um, chair of the EBC. I was the prior, um, chair of the EBC and I feel like we have to put some faith in them as well. And I feel like we could, I mean, if we, I feel like there are two options here that I would be comfortable with. Either leave it as is for the summer until we work things out and we, that has worked for us for the past several years. Or we actually go back to the, um, the letter they sent us and signed that they had agreed to and try that as a trial for two months and see how, and then we amend it.
Could we think about drawing that as a voluntary trial? So it doesn't have to be an ordinance or a resolution.
Right, maybe it's a resolution in one night. You don't have a 30-day period.
Well, maybe what, maybe what we do is, um, maybe staff can talk to the, the business leaders who put this together and see if the businesses would be willing to just do it as a trial without a resolution or informally.
You mean the trial, what, their 80 decimal suggestion?
Yeah, to trial what's in their suggestion and see how it goes. See whether we get, see whether we get feedback from residents.
And if residents complain that that's too loud, what do you do?
Well, it's a trial. It's, you know, we work with the businesses. And let them know that, I would think. We just continue to have the conversations and eventually, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, come to an agreement on what is actually work, most workable for everybody.
My concern about this is that it's going to turn into rocket science. Because it's just not really ever going to be adequately qualified. Atmosphere, wind direction, I mean, all of it gets in the way and I would rather see a smooth quickly, you know, I, I looked at 12, 14 and the 65 does seem to be the number. I think Cassidy's right. And I, it's just, it's like, yeah, that's, that's not, I can guarantee it. It's not the, the number that's actually happening in those places. The number is a lot higher in all of those places. So on the books, okay, I don't really believe it's a real number. I think the real number is probably closer to their industrial. The existing ordinance has been on the books all these many years, and we know that we get a number, a certain number of complaints every year. But our businesses have been um extremely reasonable and our residents have been extremely reasonable. And I don't think there's any reason to think that would change if they remain on the books as they are while we were, especially as we are working through this ordinance. Trustee Daffy?
I agree with that, and speaking to what you said earlier about um how responsible our venue owners are and, you know, wanting to strengthen that partnership with our businesses, you know, you're currently the um chair of the EBC, I was the prior um chair of the EBC, and I feel like we have to put some faith in them as well, and I feel like we could, I mean, if we, I feel like there are two options here that I would be comfortable with, either leave it as is for the summer until we work things out and we, that has worked for us for the past several years, or we actually go back to the um the letter they sent us and signed that they had agreed to, um, and try that as a trial for two months. And see how, and then we amend it.
Could we um think about drawing that as a voluntary trial, so it doesn't have to be an ordinance or a resolution?
There's a resolution in one night, you don't have a thirty day period.
Well, maybe what, maybe what we do is um maybe staff can talk to the the business leaders who put this together and see if the businesses would be willing to just do it as a trial. Without a resolution, just more informally.
You mean? A trial, what, their eighty decimal suggestion?
Yeah, to trial what's in their suggestion and see how it goes. See whether we get, see whether we get feedback from residents.
And if residents complain that that's too loud, what do you do?
Well, it's a trial, it's, you know, we work with the businesses, and let them know that, I would think, we just continue to have the conversations and eventually, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, come to an agreement on what is actually work, most workable for everybody.
My concern about this is that it's gonna turn into rocket science. Because it's just not really ever going to be adequately qualified. Atmosphere, wind direction, I mean, all of it. Gets in the way, and I would rather see a smooth quickly, you know, I I looked at twelve fourteen and and sixty-five does seem to be the number, I think Cassidy's right, and I just, I mean, it's just, it's like yeah, that's, that's not, I can guarantee it, it's not the the number that's actually happening in those places. The number is a lot higher in all of those places, so on the books, okay, I don't really believe it's a real number. I think the real number is probably closer to their industrial daytime number. And for a lot of that, it's eighty. And seventy-five, and I I feel like we can, we can just spend a hell of a lot of time on this. Or we could do something like that, do a resolution, let's try it for the summer, let's do eighty, if eighty seems to work, then we could make a quick decision in the fall. That it's eighty or seventy-five or whatever. Uh, it feels like the number is based on a responsibly documented. But I I think we get a consultant and and, I mean, I would, I would rather just have uh, well, we'll be Cassidy, because we'll be with the set of the twenty. But somebody to go around and, you know, walk with these businesses to the to the edge of their properties, here's what your numbers are right now. Uh, well, hell, I'll I'll do that on a Friday night with all those businesses, hey, meet me at such and such a time, I got the, I got the town's meter. You know, because I don't think they really know what it's like on the other side of High Street or, you know, wherever you have to be.
So the eighty dB in that letter is proposed at the complaining residence property, not at so that's the, that's the issue.
And that's pretty loud.
That's really.
Pretty loud.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So is that what we're, when you, when we're talking about eighty dB, you're talking about what they're proposing here, right, and then you're correct?
Yeah, but totally open to debate.
I I think, I think any of the decimal levels that we settle on do have to be at the complaining party's property.
So the, I think, I I can see why, but what I struggle with is does that mean, you know, as somebody pointed out, um, the way this town is geographically, um, I can hear the planet louder than I can hear main stage sometimes, or or the rock garden, and it's farther away, and so are we really expecting the the businesses to know what decibel level is gonna reach which of the nine hundred and eighty rooftops in our town?
That's what's, that's what seems hard to me.
And if they're playing soft rock or huh?
Yeah, as a bluegrass or Norwegian death metal, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think that's why the consultant comes in, it builds a database that if you, like i- i- if it's eighty-five decibels at the venue, then we've checked, depending on these may not be ten places, but if these five places, that translates into this amount here. Sixty-five here and sixty-three here, that type of thing, and and I don't think we can put the entire burden on the businesses to do that. But understand that it's also to me, keeping a bigger risk and a bigger burden on the businesses to have a pure reasonableness standard that you don't know what sheriff's deputy may show up on a given night and say the level should be this or that. So we're leaving them uncertain, and let's not forget the residents in from, based on the emails. Number of emails and 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 comments here. They may be in the receipt minority, but that doesn't mean we ignore their provisions either. I don't think it's fair to leave a resident who has a complaint about noise without them. What happens for the next three months, six months, however long it may take us, for somebody who's truly bothered by the noise and just said, I want you to do something, I want you to do something, I want you to do something. Nobody's gonna know what the rules are. And I think that's the biggest benefit of going forward and trying to ever at the details. If we're not gonna do that, if I'm not gonna do an ordinance, it it can be done in the next couple of months, I believe. Before the end of the summer. Um, then we've got to tell people what the rules are in the interim. And then again, I think we duck our responsibility to both residents who are bothered by noise and to venue owners who don't know what the rules are. By not, by just leaving interplaces, we're basically wrong in the eyes. And I'll say this again, the number of complaints received by the sheriff's office is not really the determining factor of whether this is a problem or not. Town staff gets communications about this. Each of us, I will bet individually, has heard from neighbors, friends about, they sure were loud last night, we had a resident show up at the town hall meeting saying the rock garden was too loud Monday and they were going too late. Um, so there are various levels of complaint to the point that I don't think we should, we can safely rely on, and not too many people are gonna complain because they have complained against us. Um, so I I really think we need to come up with some type of uh, if we're not gonna do an ordinance in fairly short order as soon as we can get it done. And we've got to decide what the rules are in the meantime. I don't think the business's proposal has a default under some sort of informal acid experiment is. That I I personally think eighty decibels have to be, probably is too loud. I think something less, and I remind everybody, Golden's initial ordinance was eighty-two, and they had no problems with it. That's why they hired their consultants, and then they're going down to sixty-five, that's what I agree with. Uh, Mayor Proten was too up. Um, I think we should try something in the in between there and see if it works. Um, and adjust it accordingly, you know. Uh, we don't need to repeal it or for the sunset, we we can amend an ordinance. And fairly sure more of it is two meetings, six thousand months to amend an ordinance, we don't, we don't know what we want to do. So I really do believe that we need to move forward and as reluctant as anybody may be to tackle the details, the real solution here is in detail, and I wish it didn't have to be mathematics, a lot of math and science involved. But the alternative to that is a reasonable standard that leaves everybody uncertain, and I don't think, I don't think that's the way to go either. I think that's too risky for the businesses and too unpredictable for the evidence.
I, yeah, I think, I don't think anybody just agrees with either, I think the question is just now. And what do we do in the meantime while we're creating the ordinance and we're gonna have the details?
As as staff look into uh noise consultants, whether we could get somebody to band around for four places in town?
We were planning to um have Cassidy and code compliance officer work on that first before we hired someone, but if you want to hire someone certainly can.
If if the code compliance officer, it's gonna be an after-hours task, obviously.
Or or like I said, or we work with the businesses and test individually.
I think that would be, actually, that'd be more difficult to have them bring bands in during the day and.
It's not, it's not real sound.
So in the middle?
Yeah.
You've got eighty-five and sixty-five, or eighty and sixty-five, seventy-two. Actually, like you said, you can amend it then afterwards.
I will say that Michael Grace, I talked to him this afternoon, has some he said he could, he could train a staff person if they're available after hours, or he has some references in the, at the end of the day.
When we talk about data points, you know, do we have to then document which direction the wind is, what the conditions, I mean? But but I mean, you're never gonna have the same two days.
Yeah.
But I think, so I don't know, we can get some bids on a consultant to have them come out weekend nights several times. You might have a, might be high, um, but we can see, I mean, our code compliance can work those hours if we wanna work with them, but.
A lot of worry about the wind, if it's windy that day and someone complains, then they have to turn it down, but you go with a number and you say, yeah, that's, that's the number and and the factors.
But that's what they're saying is can't expect a venue to be monitoring that every hour, look what happened tonight in the Miller meeting, that changed significantly. Trusty Brownie?
I I was gonna say, Michael did say that probably the, the cheapest way to do it is to, with, he can train town staffers to do it.
That's what we were saying, we could do it, I mean, several of us live here in town, you could train to, you know, I don't know.
It will, it will require for after-hours, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Set a demonstration.
It doesn't have to take a long time, I mean.
We'll have to determine the.
Locations. We would, we've already kind of started working on those, and there's not as many as you think, when you look at the, where the known concerns come from, the right, you know, the more regular concerns come from.
Yeah, you might try to.
I wanted to request that Linnfield Place be included, because I feel like that there's a pretty close.
And that is not when we, the.
But that's when I spoke to this morning.
Well, that's about, not about.
I know, but. So I feel like that's a good.
I would say it might suggest that staff put together maybe a map in the next administrator's report, and then maybe a little bit of parameters, like we'll be out there for fifteen minutes or ten minutes, from, you know, six to seven or nine, I mean, I think the more we are clear and consistent with how much data you want us to get so that we can try and capture this correctly the first time, rather than like, oh, well, so maybe we put a proposal together in the next administrator report with again a map, kind of what we're thinking, or confirm it that way.
Do you wanna try to get a, an, an, a bid, a quote for?
I think that would be.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I agree with that.
We're also focusing you mostly exclusively on sound levels, and there are a number of other issues that need to be addressed, including day and time restrictions, and I think we should at least have preliminary discussion. To give some direction to staff about where our majority of the board thinks we should go on, should we have them at all, and if so what are people's opinions as to what's reasonable?
I'm happy to start with that, um, I think we're nine o'clock, um, Sunday through Thursday. What was it, um, trustee?
I would say August fifteenth through May. May fifteenth through twenty.
Yeah, like this year. Nine thirty otherwise and ten PM on weekends.
I'm not in favor of changing it by time of year because it gets too complicated for people to drive. I believe, I believe you could distinguish between weekdays and weekends. Uh, and the fact that there's not much downtime between October and April, means there's not much of a problem, but I I think once you start dividing it in periods of the year. I think what we should focus on is what holidays might be exceptional. Uh, and I think it's gonna undo the complicating where you start distinguishing dates.
We just did that for the um kids wearing personal flirtation devices.
Yes, I know, I wasn't thrilled with that, and responsibly got from the town administrators, that would be very difficult to enforce. But you, if if you did that, we're gonna have venue owners and patrons and residents.
So, so what can you propose in that case?
What what we, what we've done now in the overlay district, we went through this whole process back then, we ended up days and times, you can change it by.
So what were you recommending?
It's, it's the overlay district right now, which is the Moxie, Thorough Linnfield Place bottom, is nine o'clock on weekdays.
Okay, so you inhabit at nine o'clock even throughout the summer?
Yes, I would agree, I think some places better, I would be Sunday to Thursday nine and ten on weekends.
I'd like to throw out there ten thirty on the weekends.
I could be open to that too.
Yeah.
I might be one person who was, was saying, you know, the, an extra hour of music on a weekend night can be a thousand dollars.
Well, and, you know, we if we're gonna, I, it just, it supports our businesses, you can make a lot more money, you know. And I don't know that, I mean, I'd be curious to know whether staff thinks it would cause a new sort of problem with I mean, anything having to do with law enforcement, like public drunkenness or anyone like that, or.
Apple.
I I can, I don't either.
Stop selling alcohol in the southern city.
I could go with ten thirty, dude.
On Friday and Saturday.
On Friday and Saturday.
And let's talk about, let's talk about holidays, the, the draft suggests we need to, like, name, name holidays each year, no, I I think we should in advance, decide, and and it's not just the holiday itself, because it's a lot of Monday holidays. Are you talking about the night before the holidays, or are you talking about the holiday itself?
Are you talking about like July fourth and Labor Day weekend?
Memorial Day and Labor Day are probably.
Those are the ones I think.
Main ones that are involved in the.
So Memorial Day typically falls on a Monday.
So that would be this Sunday night, that would be um, what do you, how do you all feel about having staff determine what the holiday schedule should be?
Like the regular day, but I think that needs to be part of their, also like get to an ordinance, that needs to be part of the ordinance.
Absolutely, we will get to it.
Could we include something like creative lights, you know, but because that's on Saturday night, and they might, if it's a reasonable evening.
That's a kind of.
Uh, I'm sorry, I meant at the um, at a venue.
Public sound it.
Right, yeah, I think we would look to staff for recommendations.
Another issue is if we're gonna have a licensing process, should they be treated the way we do short-term vacation rentals, where if you get a outdoor music menu license, that that also qualifies as a business licensing, you don't have to be double licensing.
No.
And we started off short-term vacation rentals that you had to get both and got feedback from the people that were doing Airbnb, so it was two honors, we talked to them, we did my friendly. And we changed it, where I believe, with single license for short-term vacation rental. It's all we have to do, they don't have to get a separate business fund.
I thought some of that was legality, though, because a short-term rental is not specifically can be, you can't, your house can't be considered a business for the short-term rental, I thought there was part of it with legality.
Well, and and my concern with that, if we combine them into one, is um, if let's say venue um decides that they no longer wanna offer music or vice versa, you know, would there be an impact? So there, there may be businesses that never offer music, and there may be businesses that only offer music, I think they should be separate, and then, you know, also for tax payment enforcement reasons.
That is on my, on my list as well, that the process that applies to business licenses that you're not entitled to get or retain a business license if you're doing one of those packs, should probably apply the music venues as well. That would be part of the process. Um, if we're gonna do a separate license, will it be a fairly nominal fee, which is what, a hundred dollars for short-term vacation rentals? Or are we going to try to impose a bigger fee to
I think we.
Address some of the costs of enforcing the ordinance.
Well, um, hopefully there won't be a lot of enforcement needed, but I do think that it's wise to have a fee that covers the cost of staff time to process the applications, I wouldn't be interested in charging more than that. That's technically, fees are only to cover that.
Yeah, in theory, that's what we do already, but what's, what's our S P B R?
I'd have to look it up.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five or a hundred.
Seventy-five. I don't know what the S T R.
This isn't like a moneymaker for the town.
Yeah, it's not supposed to. Something we discussed at the workshop, we probably ought to put on the record here in the meeting too, is if we do a good neighbor policy, which I think has gotten general support from the board, should it be in the code, should it be a separate policy, should it be part of the application? What should we do in terms of, and the one that's in there uh, it needs to more, I believe, several respects. Uh, that's, that was an issue that we, you know, we, we mentioned that at the workshop.
We did mention. And it it seemed like the, the board in general, correct me if I'm mistaken, um, was leaning toward not having it be part of the application, but um referred to in the application, and it could either be a resolution or it could be an agreement that is um drafted and held by staff that staff can change. Um, as they, as we learn more about how it's gonna work.
Running down a list of it, that either, I can, or some people commented that I came up with. Oh, a couple people mentioned this. If we retain as the draft suggested, a twenty-five foot rule generally but make a specific exception for licensed music venues, which is how this is drafted at the moment. That twenty-five foot rule, sound, amplified sound audible twenty-five feet from the source would apply to things like backyard parties where somebody has speakers playing, or backyard music practice for somebody to choose in and with a guitar. Um, do we want to if we can go to the decibel rate or. If we can go to a decibel rate or do we want to have it applied? In all situations, just to license music venues? And if just licensed music venues, what do we do about backyard parties, band practices that I perform?
Can we differentiate between the two?
Yeah.
Way it's drafted out would be, it would, it would. Still be a twenty-five foot rule if somebody's out in their backyard with a small amp rack and their guitar and the neighbor can hear it thirty feet away is deemed unreasonable. Maybe you want, maybe that's a really wanted, I don't know.
Do we, um, do we hear a lot of complaints about things like that?
Rarely. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think. No. No, very rarely. But, but as you know, they. They don't necessarily call staff. They may be putting it on social media or, or notifying you guys. Staff did not get one letter about this. When the mayor met with us this morning, we were like, what do you mean? There were a hundred. What? We had no clue there. We're not being included in that. So I don't, I. We, staff does not receive those.
I think this was mentioned. They were issued on Evan Street with somebody playing backyard music, right?
They said that, but I was not, I'm not aware of it.
Think that made its way to social media.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. People need to start reporting it to the right places, the non-emergency number and to staff. You know, it's, it's an education thing because we did, I did not get one letter on this, that one. I haven't seen any of those comments you're talking about.
Oh, four to all hundreds.
Okay, great.
I, I know that there was a band that used to practice on down on Second Avenue. I thought they were pretty good. I enjoyed it. Yeah, but I understand they got complaints from neighbors and they don't want to practice outside, out, outdoors. Uh, but I, I think we do need to address. There's kind of the way that ordinance exists now and it's still the, I mean, there's kind of a separate section. They're like backyard parties. Noisy gatherings or something.
Well, maybe it could be something like non-commercial music. Right now, just ranting over. The backyard parties, the practices, the speakers. So, uh, music that's being made for.
And I'm just throwing this out there is, and asking, is that something we wanna have, continuing to be sort of in twenty-five foot rule?
That's a question.
Yeah.
I think it's really different between residential and commercial. I think of. Where we live warehouses are really close together. I feel like twenty-five feet would be appropriate. But I feel like downtown where you're looking at the main street and where those residences are located close to Maine. I really see it like. On high, actually. Um, I think it's more like. I think there is a difference there.
But can you, can we legislate based on size of lots, uh, you know?
No. Well, I, and, and again, I look to, to a noise consultant or somebody, a professional who can kind of guide us as well.
I just, I guess I'm just listening to this and I'm fairly new, but I'm wondering, um. As you're, this is a great question, but what is, to me, this comes back to what's the purpose of the license? You know, if we have an ordinance and the ordinance is in effect. What are you adding to the process by requiring a license if you already have the ordinance? If it's communication, right? Could that be solved just through a communication strategy with the businesses? Like, I guess. Is there an, an additional reason for the layer of the license on the businesses? So just as I'm listening to you all talk, because I think that's a good question, just something that is. And then my other question as I read the ordinance is. What's the definition of a complaint, right? Like, does it have to be a verified complaint, right? And that's based on some chatter I heard, you know, out in the. Audience is, um, you know, what does a complaint mean? So just, I'm just gonna throw both of those out there.
Thanks, thank you.
One comment that was. Free, I'm sorry, probably should have sent forwarded you all of, all those emails. One comment that was frequent. It, that we got from a lot of these people was the way the draft was, it re, it referenced. Three complaints and it was the potential usual license and they should be, many people suggested three violations because the complaint.
Yeah.
May or may not be valid. It's something that it checks about. Oh, here, here's another issue.
Wait, I don't think.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's, let's try to solve them one at a time if we can.
Okay. Yeah, so what do you wanna do about non, non-commercial?
But let's, let's talk.
Non-commercial music.
Non-commercial music and, um, I think that. If I'm thinking about being in my backyard, um. Sixty-five decibels, which is the sound of conversations. Is kind of as loud as I want it to be. And you know, like, my neighbors, they play music all the time and they practice all the time and I love it. It sounds great. Um. But if I didn't love it, it would be a problem and I would wanna be able to have some sort of remedy for it. So how do we feel about sixty-five decibels for non-commercial music from the complaining company?
The practicalities of measuring. House by house sound. It's like overwhelming.
Well, it's the same kind of thing. It's like you call, you call in a complaint and someone shows up with a. Decibel reader. I don't know how else to enforce it except to say, except to define a reasonable standard and you know, kind of trouble that gets them.
Right. That, that, and that's why, I mean, it all earned it as an audible from X number of feet.
Same audible, no, I mean.
Yeah.
That's why we're not necessarily gonna be able to test or.
Agreed.
I mean, if, if, um. Trusty Datsy and trusty Hammer are having a conversation in your next door and they're audible to me, do I get to complain about that? Yeah, I mean.
That's addressed in that subsection or. I mean, there is something that addresses that maybe not level, but it's in the existing ordinance now. Careful for it, so. Now, but there's, there's a subset, sure.
They gathering persons and allowing activities. For more than fifteen minutes between ten PM and eight AM. And audible twenty-five feet from the source, the sound of.
Ten PM to eight AM. That is reasonable, but. I think it was Sergeant Sears who once said that. Law enforcement is, has to apply a reasonable standard regularly. You know, they make a ton of judgment calls. Very quickly and. They're okay with that, you know, but they're not necessarily going to always be the one responding.
And it may be that the number of, um. Complaints related to non-commercial.
Gets handled.
Sound is so low that you. Might simply rely on them to try to resolve that compared to. Six different, eight different, whatever it is, commercial outdoor music venues in town. That's something we could do.
I, I think that that has, um, worked in the past. I see a reason why it would continue to.
You know, when you're talking about noise too, I, I'm trying to remember some of the other. Concerns that have been expressed over the years. Construction sound. When LVP was being built up, do you remember the one family that came in that was like. We're, we're, it's making me crazy. They ended up moving out of the town. But it's like every day, all day and it's loud and it saws and it's, you know, so you can't muffle those things. Sometimes. Yeah. Sometimes we don't even control what that is.
Genius. Well, that's exactly why I visited the tenant at Winfield, um, place who was complaining about the HVAC system. Because that has been going on for years and it disrupts her sleep as she depends on medical equipment. That needs the cool air coming in from the window, but she can't. Leave the window open with this screeching noise from the HVAC belt. So I feel like, you know, when we talk about, um, this subsection here around repair or adjustment of a motor vehicle, I almost wanna add like. Or motorized equipment.
Yeah.
To that.
For, for sure.
Um. Just, just because the, I think the court compliance officer did try and, um, follow up with her and, and didn't have anything to fall back on.
We've been dealing with that for, for literally years and it's not in disrepair. It is just the sound that it makes.
Four or five court compliance officers, including myself, but then.
So that's another issue, but.
Yeah.
But no, those kinds of noises. As you heard tonight, are just as in the dog barking next door. Um, but people need to call non-emergency and say, I'm having, I'm concerned about this dog barking for an hour.
Yeah, I, I think the challenge is trying to find a balance here because, you know, we don't wanna over legislate.
Absolutely.
We, we have to. Leave room for people to work together. For the sheriff deputies and for staff to make those calls. And. For situations that could occur that we can't even imagine. Right? So that's a balance that's tough. And to your point, um, Hannah Ritchie about why, why have the licensing agreement? I'm trying to remember what the reasoning was behind that.
I'm sure you had the discussion.
We have had their, yeah. And I think it, I think it was, um. More about in, incentivizing businesses and kind of like. Knowing who they were, but just kind of. Is, there was.
Just kind of awareness.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking to the other trustees, see if they, they remember more than I do.
But if the passage and ordinance is, is.
Yeah.
Applicable to.
You get the content.
Well, I, exactly. I gotta get with the primary content and the secondary. I mean, it's literally on the first page. I think that's so important for people to know who to call. And, and for that to be posted.
That, that is important, but I'm not sure that tags in a, a permit application on that.
That's what you're saying. If it's in the code, then they need to.
What, and so, um, which brings me to think about special events. Cause I think one of the reasons for that also was to. Um, for the businesses to be able to ask for a special event. Yeah.
Which that I think just totally sucks.
Yeah.
Right? It's a process for special events.
But there, but there are already use of process for special events.
Use major event and a minor event is what we would need for this. So it's not fifteen pages of what are you doing for, you know, it's just a acknowledgement.
Well, kind of like the golf card permit registration where we're asking people to register their golf card so that we know they're aware of where they can drive their golf cart, where they can't drive it, what the rules are. So I feel like this permit application also does a good, good job of informing businesses as to what. We input in our ordinance. I mean, obviously we just could find the ordinance and say this is it, but this is kind of defining and having them sign to it. I mean, they're signing this, right?
Why don't we, why not? Would you consider just starting with us getting like some codes for consultants? Staff identifying where we hear the most concerns are. If we feel like we can implement, you know, get you some data. Over this next month. I think the bigger question is what do you wanna do with the current code? Do you wanna leave it since it's been in place? Or do you wanna have a moratorium and adopt some form of a policy by resolution in the meantime as a trial?
I, I would like something even as I, I. For the next few months, I don't think it's gonna cause harm.
Agreed.
And if it does cause harm, we could do, um, a moratorium.
Yeah.
And a resolution. We give a bad.
Um. I wish I shared your confidence that it was not going to cause harm. Perhaps. The. That's the possibility of. A merit, the total moratorium on enforcing the noise or things might. If those who might, who would do something, might be inclined to do something like. File a complaint on Friday, Saturday. Up on thirty Friday, Saturday night, and then again the next week, next week, try to. Basically enforce the twenty-five foot rule, which somebody, anybody can do that that wants to right now. Anybody? Call the sheriff's office, play to the town and say, uh, this is on your books? Want you to enforce this.
But we do know that the, the sheriff will say, I will go to that site, give them a warning. They don't turn it down, I will take them.
And so you have, you set up that like three, two-step process. And you convey to anybody who doesn't, who doesn't like the amplified music. And like on the sheriff's office, I can make that, then you turn their music down.
They could do.
Attorney General.
Yeah, I mean, I see, I don't see how we could have nothing in place. I guess is what I'm struggling to understand. You wanna appeal the existing noise ordinance. And the current one isn't really being enforced, you know, at all. Like what harm is there likely to continue until the new ordinance is in place? Otherwise you have nothing, right? And so some, it was a seriously bad actor, a lion's den, say, well, we're gonna crank it all the way up. We have zero recourse against them. Versus at least now, you know, the only time we've ever really used the noise ordinance was that versus that very, you know, very, very bad actor type.
I don't think that's right. I think, I think there have been. Uh, contacts and turning it down and complaints.
Yeah, certainly turn it down. I don't think we've sent anyone to court for a noise complaint of the lion's den.
But isn't that the whole issue? Turn it down to where, how about? Turn it down to new sites. Sheriff's.
I mean, that's the way it's gonna be always. I mean, even when you put in a noise decimal limit, they're gonna tell them, they'll show up and say, turn it down, and then they'll come back when there's another complaint, then do a measurement. That's how this works in reality.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I mean, to me, past is prologue and it's gonna be fine for the next few months while we work this out.
Sounds like you have a majority.
Yeah. So, I know, you can, you, maybe it'll be the idea I told you so.
Best confidence that you do in that respect.
Yeah.
And that seems to be the majority of the board.
Yeah.
Um.
What else?
The, the next issue I was gonna mention that, that's sort of related to the last one is. Um, if we. Do, um. Day and time limits and decimal limits on amplified music. Are there limits on acoustic music? If we say, uh, but at ten o'clock shutdown time on weekends, at ten thirty shutdown time on weekends. For amplified music, but the venue wants to, a band wants to continue to go acoustic till midnight. Allow that or not?
That's a good question.
And it's, that's happening forward.
I think, I honestly, I think we just make it simple and, you know, music stops at every amplified or not.
Does a string quartet will produce as many decibels?
Well, as we learned, and we don't wanna get into like, there's just, that's, seems like a.
Slippery slope.
Yeah, well, it seems like it ju, it just got complicated. So.
You can play a string quartet.
No, no, except in your backyard.
Is it?
You can go home and play on your host called room, private music channels with four and one.
Okay, so, um, Victoria, do you feel like? That has enough to go on now?
Well, we have a little bit to go on.
Yeah.
It, it's. Um. We'll do our best to bring something back in two weeks for you.
Let's keep it moving if we can.
Um, I don't know if we can get the consultant, but yeah, we'll have to see people who use it.
You, you mentioned the special event.
Yeah.
Process.
Mm-hmm.
Does the existing special event process? Cover special events on private commercial property or just? It does.
Yeah.
I, I guess I really haven't relooked at that. I, we need to look and see whether that would be added or if somebody that wanted to.
Have a neighborhood party or something?
No, I'm, I'm, I mean, I mean for the, the, the music venues. Um, the existing, um, overlay district, for example, let's let any business in that district. Request four extended hours sessions per year.
That would be probably a different form we would. Develop. The special event major is a, a pretty detailed.
Yeah.
That has security on it and all that. If we had a minor special event that was specific to this ordinance, you know, that would be. At least it's documented. It could be published, posted, so people are going to expect it.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess the question will come to, do we want to put something in? The new noise ordinance, similar to what's in the overlay district, getting the commercial. Then you can request up to.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Extended hours things per year.
Yeah, and if you are thinking that really this is only an issue from. April through October is four too many, or is that a good number? That's, you know, or you want to. Is, you're probably aren't gonna be using those between October and April.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you what comes up because it's the Stone Cup. That came from the Stone Cup, one special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Different hours during, during the festival. And, and that's been done by some of the, uh, existing venues too, that after, after, after festival. Sessions. So.
Trusty Hammer.
Uh, switching gears here, a couple, we heard from a couple of residents about. Building band shells.
Hmm.
And I, you know, we're not gonna have the business recovery program discussion tonight, but. It, it kind of dawned on me that, you know, probably some, some kind of retrofit for some of the stages could go a long way in solving problems. So. I'm not suggesting we use that fund to do that, but, you know, maybe, I don't know what the answer is, but.
Good things have been.
Looking at, yeah, different ways to construct the, the stages and.
And some could do retrofit, lion's den, but quite a bit of work actually, but.
Did they?
It didn't, it didn't solve their issue at the time. Um.
You know, I would regard that as a choice of the business if they. Whatever reason, because of their location, they're really close to rest and something like Lions did try. They believe if that's something they think they have to do, comply. You know, there are business recovery funds and that kind of thing to help them. But for the town, basically, either help them build it without money or. Compel them to do any kind of.
And I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, if they knew what the right answer is, because you look at the stage at. At Rock Garden and at Main Stage and it's, yeah, there's nothing to them.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna, I want to keep us moving along on the ordinance itself. So we were down to um special exemption permits per year and a number of them. Um, I'd like, I would like to see a recommendation from staff knowing how short the season is. And what the special event permit, special permits might be used for. Um, all right, is. Is there anything else that we didn't cover that we need to cover before our next meeting on June sixteenth?
Regarding noise ordinance?
Regarding the noise ordinance. Well, if we're leaving the current one in place for now, I feel like there's nothing else we discussed tonight, right? It can wait for two weeks.
That's it, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, I think we're good. All right, trustee Browning.
I'm going down the list. Give me just a second.
Okay.
Sorry, we don't need to discuss it tonight, but let me just raise this as an issue, bullet point basically. Also raised in a couple of emails, um, the noise meters that we have. Michael said that they're capable of doing this. There are different settings. You can do what are called slow meters or fast meters. A slow meter is, I understand it, will measure sound over one second increment. Whereas the fast meter is less than that. Where that gets important is whether you're measuring just peaks of sound. If you have a very short peak where it's ninety decibels, but the average sound over on a slow meter is. It's five decibel, whatever it might be, um, that that may need to be addressed in the ordinance. Just what your meter settings are, so whether you're, whether, you know. Twice during the night, you hit ninety decibels for half a second. Is that by like your ordinance or not? And and we don't need to discuss that, but it it is an issue.
It would be sustained.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. If we do the licensing process, and I agree, we may be able to come up with a way not to do that. At the point several people, before, before any kind of licenses revoke, there needs to be a deal process. Oh, this came up a little bit at the workshop too, but maybe we should be clear on where we are. If if we require a license, will there be any requirement of the businesses to mail neighbors within a certain. Number of feet out of business?
Well, I I think um. We don't need to have that discussion until we decide whether we're gonna have a license or not.
I'll just note there were a number of complaints, but I don't think, I don't think we generally require that for other. Types of licenses. Like short-term vacation rooms. I think that, no, I have some, I I have some, I have some drafting issues about. Language and organization, but I will email, email those to staff separately.
Right, okay, so let's move on from this. Um, nice work, everybody. That was a lot to get through. Um, it's ten twenty-three, we still have. Um, resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight to talk about, and we also have an executive session I want to point out. So um, let's move on to resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight. Um, uh regarding pavement, we have a staff report on that.
Yes.
Perez, I can give it, I don't know.
Poor Justin.
Oh, Justin, he's left. Um, I know that we all read the packet, so if we could condense the staff report. And get to questions, that would be super helpful at this late time.
All right, yeah, um. It's repaving uh uh four streets and chipping two streets. Um, and as you saw, we uh with all the work and kind of adding some things, some drainage improvements that we feel are necessary. Uh, we're over what has been budgeted for the year, so. Basically, we just kind of need to know from the board's perspective, um, if they would rather reduce. How many streets we do, or if they're wanting to reallocate funds and try to um do the whole package.
Yeah, if you recall, uh, when we went out for a bid on this, I brought it to the board of. Do you want an extended bid to include storm drainage along these areas where we're gonna do sidewalks? And you guys had said, yes, let's see what the cost comes in at. Um, and so on the financial section of this uh staff report, you have that up?
I do, I have it on, but I don't have, I'm not sharing my screen.
We can look at it on our.
Okay. So, yeah, we need to know if the board wants to do the work that was the minimum of what we were going to do. We are, we do have enough in our budget for that, correct, Justin?
But it was that we were gonna do not just paving at that minimum, right? To pick.
Yeah, I think.
Projects.
Yeah, I think we really need to, after hearing kind of what's going on with the drainage and seeing some of those, I. I do feel that regardless of when we touch those streets, that we do need to make those drainage improvements. Um, and so. Um, yeah, I don't, I think, we had talked about earlier of maybe having the drainage improvement separate, but I. I I think, I don't think it'd be wise to uh do some of the pavement improvements without. Doing the drainage improvements at the same time, so that's kind of how we set up the bid is just to um. Kind of be a, on a street by street basis, and so, um, yeah, if we. If we don't want to do it, I don't recommend eliminating, say, the curb and gutter from the stream, paving it, because. We'll come back and we'll have to damage the pavement portion of it to do that curb and gutter later. And we'll still kind of have the drainage issue ongoing in the meantime.
Um, can I ask whether these streets are listed in order of priority?
Not, because it's north to south, right, Re Street, the furthest north, Seward Street.
Is it possible to give us? What the priorities, what the priority would be, like, where would you start?
I would work, um, I actually would work from north to south because you, um. Far as the curb and gutter goes, if you did south, the way that drains, you could actually be catching, you know, a street above you. So you would be accumulating more, so I would, um, yeah, I would work north to south on that, um. And then four street, it makes sense to put it in, but yeah, that would, as far as the three or the, sorry, the four streets that were recommended curb and gutter in. Probably Stickney and Fourth would be the two lowest on that.
No one's replacement versus having none.
I would, I think it makes sense to do this work now, knowing those sidewalks are going in. I'm wondering in terms of allocating money, um, if. The board thinks that this would be a good use of the infrastructure, um, for sure, tax.
For sure. So it looks like we need the hundred thirty thousand nine ninety-two, right? But we've got fifty-five K from the safe streets.
Yeah, so that would be eighty.
So we need eighty thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars.
And the whole north side would, and the whole north side will be done. A majority of, yeah.
Were there rollover funds within the, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five within the streets?
She's still here too, go ahead.
I stayed specifically for this one. Um, there is, we have, well. I guess we didn't budget anything in the Capital Streets Fund last year, so there really isn't rollover dollars. But there's fund balance remaining, um, fund balance of about five hundred thousand dollars. Because we did increase the transfer last year from the general fund. So the Capital Streets. Portion of the fund has five hundred thousand dollars. The general fund has around six hundred thousand dollars, um, rollover. Uh, that was, um, you know, from the increased revenues and the decrease, um, in expenditures. So there's definitely money in either of those funds, should the board want to utilize that for the remainder.
I would keep the Capital Streets Fund, we do a lot of people place for them.
Yeah.
Rather, rather than tapping into the patent.
Right, that, I'll follow that.
You're all of it, not.
Yeah, let's do it.
We're done. We only, um, we just need direction at this point and. Then at the end of the year, if we need to reallocate funds, Cassie, Cassie, that's how we would do that, correct?
Yeah, so I think we would need to know, do you want to use the leftover fifty-five thousand from the sidewalk? And then the difference from that out of the uh Capital Streets Fund?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
We will include it in a future budget amendment.
Thank you. So Ju- Justin, um, you're anticipating if we accept this bid tomorrow, tell the company. When would the work occur?
Uh, yeah, so if we approve it as is, um, I can get the contract and everything to them tomorrow. They have ten days to turn it around. We'll get them notice to proceed. And then they have an end date of the end of August, so.
End of August, okay, that's exciting.
That is exciting. All right, great. Um, thank you very much.
So we'll need a motion to pass.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight, awarding appropriate construction agreement, all for payments and services for the twenty twenty-five payment progress project.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
That motion passes, you know, who else?
All right, um, trustee reports, let's, can we be brief?
Thank you.
And if you would like to tell, send a note over to Victoria and we can get it sent out to everyone. Trustee Hammer, we're gonna start with you.
Yeah, nothing to report, a subsequent entry.
Okay, nice remedy.
I'll be twice as long. Hosting Human Services Commission will meet at four thirty on Monday, June ninth, and the LHC will meet at four thirty on Tuesday, June tenth.
Great.
I just wonder, Moon Record is noting that at ten thirty-one at night. We are such policy wonks, but we all were genuinely excited about getting these streets paved.
Amen.
It take much for excitement.
Trustee Browning.
Uh, EDC, Matt, April twenty-first, you've seen their letter in support of the. Business, any orders on the noise ordinance? The other thing isn't if they spent some time on it, anything, this recovery fund use. Which will, I think, be continued to the additional term, as we do.
Yeah.
UAB is meeting Wednesday, I believe, oh, not Ben's, it's our last.
Okay, um, I went to Dr. Cobb, um, so last week. And there are actually, I'm gonna be a little bit longer. Um, there is a new. Building the carbonization grant program. Um, the town of Lions is eligible based on our population and projected growth for fifty thousand dollars. There is no ad required. There are a number of different things this money can be used for, so I gave the application materials to Vence to figure assignments in, so that she can. Look at what we can use that for. Um, and then today I took part in Metro Mayor's Caucus. New um subcommittee called Vibe Vitality in Business and Economy. Which is composed of seven mayors from around the region, and our purpose is to. Learn about how um we can create thriving economies in our communities, so, um. That's a little extra credit on my part. Um, okay, we have a summary of action names, please?
Um, yes. Uh, this was from the workshop, I believe, with, well, there's several. Review the good neighbor, neighbor policy for potential resolution. And then I can come back to, um, unless you want me to do that, all of the, the points they gave you were good. The BOT approved a letter of support for the Voco Bike Ways Grant. Also approved a letter of support for the comprehensive composting plan. Also approved a letter of support for the SS4A grant application. Um, we did table the comp plan and EVC uh BRF discussion to the next meeting. I didn't get a date certain, but. Um, I have ordinance eleven ninety-two passed on second reading, ordinance eleven ninety-three passed on second reading. Um, and then I just have highlighted all of the. The noise discussion, and then the last thing was, um, the board did approve resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight. Uh, to do the entire project and reallocate funds at the end of the year. Using the leftover fifty-five thousand from sidewalks and I believe the rest was rollover from the streets.
Street capital funds. And then, um, tabling business recovery loan discussion.
Yeah.
That was my last one, was the EVC stuff, so you're good.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I move, we go into the executive session for so, LDRS sessions, four four dash six, dash four oh two, four eight, and four dash six, dash four oh two. On to, or we, and four four dash six, dash four oh two, four. Discussions concerning the city real property determining positions, both with matters of interest.
Is there a second? I'll vote.
Motion passed to you.
Soon to redo it, soon we get home.
Brandon, did you get the invite, the panelist invite for the other one?
I think I did, yeah.